Anacortes City Council Meeting of July 17th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to excuse Councilmember Cleland McGrath from tonight's meeting. She's out of town. Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick to excuse Christine Cleland McGrath. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
I'm sure that Ms. Cleland McGrath will appreciate the excused absence, but as I see her walk into the room right now, I can tell you that she is here in town. She was just at the ribbon cutting that several of us were at for the family center.
Yes, thank you. Yep, I was expecting her arrival, and we can note that for the record. Mr. Franciac. Okay, on to announcements and committee reports. First announcement, although also who will be coming in a few minutes late, I'm sure, our police chief, Dave Floyd. But I'd just like to welcome him back from a one-week course at the FBI National Command Course, and this is for chiefs and sheriffs for police agencies under 50 officers. And I know he picked up a wealth of information, and I know he will be at this meeting soon. So, welcome back almost in the city hall. Also, I'd like to make a, just if you didn't know, on Friday, we had a significant incident in town at about 3:30 on Friday afternoon. Anacortes Fire and Police Units were dispatched to an apartment complex for an explosion and fire in the 800 block at 30th Street. First arriving crews found a working fire on the second floor of a six-unit apartment building that was spreading into the attic. Crews were able to extinguish the fire in approximately 45 minutes. Everyone was able to safely evacuate the building. There were no injuries reported to civilians or firefighters. Unfortunately, three families were displaced. Cause of the fires under investigation, and I'd like to thank all of our mutual aid partners. And all 34 emergency responders were on the scene from Anacortes Fire Department, Anacortes Police Department, Mount Airy Fire Department, Skagit County Fire District 13, Fire District 6, Burlington Fire Department, and Mount Vernon Fire Department. So again, excellent response all the way around. I'd also like to thank the Salvation Army and the Red Cross for assisting the displaced families. And along with that, also received a letter. Dear Chief Harris, the Anacortes Housing Authority and its Board of Commissioners commend the Anacortes Fire Department for its excellent performance in extinguishing the recent fire in multi-family unit at Bayview, a Housing Authority property. Husband and I watched as your team's rapid response got the blaze under control quickly and prevented its spread to adjoining buildings in that complex. Most certainly, their actions kept property damage to a minimum and protected our tenants. We are very appreciative of the firefighters' bravery and professionalism. Thank you very much. So, next up is other announcements and committee reports. Economic Development Committee. Mr. Young.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Oh, Ms. Hubick.
I've been given the head nod to go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. We had our Economic Development Committee meeting on Tuesday, July 11th. Councilmember Young and I were there, and we took a really, really deep dive into where we want to see this committee go throughout the rest of the calendar year, what we had intentions to do. We went and did a lot of brainstorming around what we want a strategic plan to look like for the economic development. So it's not just being told, hey, Anacortes is great for this. There are, you know, steps that we need to take to put out an RFP. How does it look? What do we actually want to get from them? So taking a really thoughtful approach to see what other cities of comparable sizes have done, what have their outputs been, what have they paid for things like that. So Councilmember Young and I sat down and with staff, we kind of put together a plan for the rest of the calendar year and through March. So we have really, really high hopes. We're working with staff to actually put together some draft wording for an RFP, a request for proposal, and we expect to have that happening soon. And if I've missed anything, please jump in.
No, you really didn't, Mayor Miller. You know, the thing about it that's so important is that there are timelines that we were putting in now, the structure of how we want to go forward. You know, we did a hard look at the silos of influence that need to also participate in this thing and how we want to move. And then also, quite honestly, you know, we wanted to, we had our thoughts of questions that we had, but also at the same time, we wanted to make sure that we were addressing the needs of all of those different groups and how we get there. And so part of that was putting in a timeline, whether it's a request for proposals to come forward, whom and how we're going to work with this thing. But the beauty of that meeting was that it was, I felt, very productive, that the staff and council really solidified the path forward, that we believe that's necessary in order to move us forward as a city. And so again, and one of the reasons why I wanted, Ms. Hubick, you know, she had some extraordinary questions that she was bringing forward, some details that were fabulous. And so, you know, we worked well together.
I just didn't take notes, so I wasn't actually prepared to talk about it.
Okay, next up is our Finance Committee. I'll wait this time.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. McDougal and I attended the Finance Committee last week. We reviewed proposed edits to our city purchasing policy. We reviewed, which largely we're okay with and are okay with those moving forward, and they were consistent with what we had discussed in previous Finance Committee meeting. We reviewed the proposed library donation to be discussed tonight, so I don't think there's any value in us adding to that right now. We, I think that there was a third item, and Mr. McDougal should chime in if I've missed something. And then finally, we also discussed my proposal to codify our resolutions, so that we would have an organized repository of resolutions, council procedures, purchasing policies, finance policies, public records policies, those types of resolutions of longstanding effect, similar to the municipal code but adopted by resolution, so that we could find it, so that we could more easily edit it, so that we would have better transparency to the public, and so that we could avoid accidental edits to the resolutions that aren't consistent with what we are attempting to achieve. And so that would take the form of an ordinance amending the code to set up the separate organization of resolutions, and we'll be bringing that forward sometime soon. Mr. McDougal, was, did you remember the other item?
I think it was. The other item I had was the Public Works Emergency Purchasing Policy as its own kind of standalone thing. And I think we had, we'd discussed basically some things like what constitutes an emergency and definitions and things like that, to which we largely agreed as well, that the language sounded good.
Okay, next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee Report.
Mayor.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. We had a great HACX meeting last Thursday. Mr. Walters and I were there, and we had a guest. It was Brian Clark from the Anacortes Housing Authority. So we received an excellent update on the status of the Olson Building renovation, which we have been contributing money toward as a result of the sales tax increase that our citizens approved a couple of years ago. So that money is being banked and split between the Family Center and the Housing Authority. And this is one of the projects that is, it is making possible. So it's very exciting. It's, will be 12 units, and the building will be three stories, eight two-bedroom units and four one-bedroom units. And they will serve families making between $21,900 a year and $54,660 a year. So that's people at or below 60% of area median income. So it's a really great window of income that we're not currently, that it'll be great to be able to serve more households. The rent on those will be $854 to $1,311. So just really great news on that. The project is going to cost $5 million total, and $3 million of that is coming from our Yes for Housing dollars from that sales tax increase. So thanks to the City of Anacortes. And Brian will be coming to council and the public to do a full presentation, but they have drawings, and it's really coming along in the hope, it's a very aggressive schedule, and the occupancy, they're hoping for January of 2025. So that would be really exciting, too. So it was a really, really good meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. And since you mentioned the Yes for Housing, a number of us just came from very, very recently the ribbon cutting at the Landing Apartments, Anacortes Family Center project that was also funded substantially with those, with those dollars. So again, we're making some progress there. So thank you. Anything else to report on that? Okay, Public Works Committee is next up.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
We just had the Public Works Committee meeting at 5:00, and it was Mr. Young and I and staff from the Finance Department and the Public Works Department, because we were looking at a preview of the capital facilities plan for Public Works, which was great to have this early look at it. It's a rough draft, but it gave us a really great idea on what the money is being spent on now and what we're looking at for next year. So we only got through part of it. We'll need another two hours to get through the whole thing. We talked about the water system. We talked about the operations, facility and staff, facilities maintenance and repairs, because we had a lot of questions about that last year and how that money was being spent. And so there have been some adjustments to that. And then that was pretty much, that was pretty much it. But a really great overview. We'll really be digging into that at our next meeting, and more to follow. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I'm glad you were able to dive in on the capital facilities plan. I know we've made the commitment to get that early, early and often for council to look at that. Okay, next up is Skagit Law and Justice Council Report. Mr. Carter.
Thank you. The law and justice met last week, and we had updates from a few of the different agencies. One of them was the Drug Task Force. And for those of you that don't know, the Drug Task Force in Skagit County was established in 1987, is comprised of our local and federal agencies. And I just want to give a shout out of the great work that they've been doing, because back in 2019, the task force was almost bankrupt. They bounced back from that, and in 2022, they were named Task Force of the Year in our western states, which is comprised of Washington, Idaho, Oregon, Nevada, California. So they've come a long way with what they're doing. But to give an example of some of the stuff that they've been dealing with is the introduction of fentanyl. Back in 2019, fentanyl costs $20 to $30 a pill, and our task, task force seized about 205 pills. Fast forward to today, fentanyl costs 50 cents a pill. And so far in 2023, they have seized over 1 million pills. So that trend is continuing to go up. And so having such a great task force and the participation from all of our agencies in our county, they're doing really great work. We also received an update from Community Court. Community Court just recently received a grant from our state, so they're able to hire three new probation officers, which is going to allow them to get more into the community. They're trying to streamline the process more, and they're trying to expand the types of charges that they are able to accept into Community Court, just making it easier, being more visible and seen by the public. And then lastly, we received an update from the jail. Our county jail has 400 beds, but they currently sit about 200 population, and that's partly due to staffing. They were having issues with trying to get people at work, staying at work, COVID scheduling. But they are pleased to report that their staffing is increasing. And they also wanted to point out that a lot of the new people that they're hiring are actually family members of people currently working at the jail. Just pointing out that the type of environment that they're working in is a place that the current workers want to be at. They want their family to work there, and their numbers are increasing. There is a lag from hire to actually working because of the training they have to go through, but the staffing numbers are increasing so that they'll be able to have a more streamlined jail. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. And next up, we're going to do some fun stuff here, and is, the next is Mayor's Award of Merit. And I am going to talk about an individual who was originally hired by the City of Anacortes in 1996, transferred as a project hire. I think that means kind of temporary, we're not sure. 97, permanent position sanitation worker. 98, water maintenance worker. Little time as a volunteer firefighter with the city. Street sewer worker. 2008, covered for the fire department as a temporary firefighter, paramedic, transferred back to street and sewer in 2009, 2020, promoted to lead street sewer maintenance worker. And then 2021, he was promoted to the position he currently serves in as supervisor, Public Works Supervisor in the Streets Department. So I want to thank this individual for representing the city and doing such a fabulous job dedicated to serving our citizens in a professional, efficient, and courteous manner. I've got all sorts of letters of how great this person is. But with that, I'm going to ask Brandon Lowry to come on up here, and I'm going to give you an award and promise there's a really nice gift card that's on the way.[978.11][978.11][applause] All right, so more fun stuff. Might as well stay down here, because we're going to do, you'll see some of these pictures that are on the, coming up on the screen. And these are our awardees for our Fourth of July Independence Day Parade. And we'll start with the best marching group. And I'm going to have Sylvia help me out with starting from, oh, no, we, no, we like to start from the, we like to start from third place. Third place best marching group, Twisted Pixies. So if we have a rep from Twisted Pixies, please come on up and receive your very coveted You got lots of ribbons, because they're always winning. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, second place best marching group, Sir Optimus. Any reps from Sir Optimus? All right, now we go to first place, Oars Best Marching Group. All right, we knew we had some, we had some rowers here. And what does Oars say? Remember to wear your life jacket.
We're Oars, Old Anacortes Rowing and Sailing Society. We've been an organization since 1978, and we want all of you to join. It's such a great group. And this parade was such a fun thing to do, and it took a whole group of us to do it, and it was ably led by our vice president and outreach committee chair, John Okerman.[1156.65][1156.65][applause]
Thank you, thank you very much, and we just invite all of you to come rowing with us. We have complimentary rows on Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:30, and you can come out and get up close and personal, so thank you.
That's a pretty reasonable time to get out there.[1180.01][1180.01][laughter] Okay, next up, we're going to go with best float. Do we have a tie, I think, in this one? Tie for third place. Sister Cities and the Merry Men. Any mermen here? I don't see flippers. Okay, it's hard to walk up here in the, okay, we'll be sure to deliver your ribbon. All right, next, in second place, best float, Sailish Sea School. Anybody to collect your ribbon? All right, well, we'll save it for you, and your name will be here in our records forever. All right, finally, the winner, best float, and I would say second year in a row, best All right, I think that's it. Thank you all for participating, and it was a great event.[1311.01][1311.01][applause] Okay, plenty of stuff on the agenda tonight, so we'll keep pressing on to public comment, which is item number four. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to comment on anything that is not on our agenda. And I do have a Marilyn Sage signed up, but we are, if it's a parking discussion, we are going to discuss parking, item 6B, if you're able to wait till then, or if you need to address the council now. Like, you'll wait till we get to the parking stuff. We'll let you go first, and then the council, we've been just talking about parking for a while. Okay, anybody else want to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda? Okay, we will move on to item five, which is our consent agenda, consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve consent agenda items 5A through E.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We are on to other business. Other business item 6A. This is an interlocal agreement, 23, with the Port of Anacortes for reciprocal property access. And Ms. Swetnam is making her way over there. I know we discussed this last week, and I think we made the appropriate changes. Hopefully you saw that. And Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Mayor, council, members of the audience. I don't have any slides tonight. I think this is pretty simple, but this is the follow-up on the discussion we had last week about the reciprocal agreement with the Port of Anacortes to allow the parties to work together to coordinate for access and doing public works types of projects. Per council's direction last week, staff worked with the port to make two changes. The first change is to paragraph 4.4.1, where we amended the limit for work having to go to the respective legislative bodies of the two agencies from $300,000 to $45,000, per council's recommendation to align with the mayor's contracting authority. The other change to make, that we made, was in Exhibit A, which is a template that can be used to request work, infrastructure work. There's a, there's a note down there at the bottom that highlights that $45,000 threshold, so that change was made as well. But other than that, the agreement is the same, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Swetnam? All right, entertain a motion.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Changes are consistent with what I asked for, so I move for approval of the ordinance contract as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Carter to approve the interlocal agreement with the Port of Anacortes for reciprocal property access. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Next up is item 6B. This is ordinance 4054, AMC Chapter 1012 Parking Code Update. This is a discussion item with possible action, and since I did promise Ms. Sage before I turned it over to Mr. Walters, if you want to come up and address the council on your issue regarding parking, just make sure the little green or blue light is on, whatever color it looks like to you, and you can bend that microphone down, you won't break it. Just make sure you're close to the microphone. Pull it all the way down, and make sure the light's on, state your name and where you live, and we just need...
Hi, I'm Marilyn Sage. I live at 6157 Parkside Drive. My issue is, I've dealt with Mr. Walters on this, who suggested I send you an email, and I sent everyone an email with pictures. We at, about two years ago, had a no parking side of our street, which is the north side of the street. Some people had asked to have it a two-hour parking limit for the playground, because it's all essentially playground there. And we ended up with 73, or 72-hour parking. The problem with that is, we have, that essentially was a bus lane, and so now people are parking on that side, and they're parking on both sides of the street, which basically eliminates anyone who meets up with the bus has to either pull back into another street, if they can pull over to the side, they can. Same with a fire truck, an ambulance, a utility vehicle from the city. There, it's, it's difficult to get down there. It's been really busy with the, all the long holidays, and we accept that people are going to come and park down there to go over to the islands. But before that, we could at least go out and have two vehicles pass one another down the road when it was a no parking sign. We haven't had any accidents that I know of. We've had one deer injury that I know of, and fortunately, we've had no children hurt. I'm, I live right across from the park. I see how they play. I'm outside gardening. You watch the kids. There's going to be an accident one day. This has gotten out of hand. And now we have FedEx who's parking there overnight. So it's, it's twice as crowded. It's just, can we please have our no parking sign back? That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the input, and I'm pretty sure council will receive that email as well, so we have that. All right, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Walters. Are you ready to take this one? Okay, Mr. Walters.
I'm not sure if we did get the email from Ms. Sage, but I've emailed IT and asked them to release it from the spam filter, if that's the hangup. So maybe we'll have it tomorrow morning. The Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee has received and processed a number of complaints with respect to parking, and so we thought it was probably important to amend the parking code to try to deal with some of those complaints. The problem with the parking code is that it hasn't been comprehensively amended in many, many years, maybe 25 years or more, and so it wasn't very amenable to amendment. And so I have taken it upon myself to rewrite the parking code chapter, modernize it, reorganize it, and that's what's before us now. We've had one meeting about it a couple of weeks ago, and now in your packet is a revised version of the chapter based on the input from staff in the interim, members of the public, and other council members. Now, Mr. Franciac was out last week, so there may have been a bit of a delay in getting it into the packet. I think, I think it maybe was published on Monday, but I think Ms. Swetnam emailed it out on Friday. So it was the email version that you had Friday that is, represents the latest version of the, of the document. Here, this is the summary of changes. First of all, we amended the applicability statement to make it clear that the chapter applies not just to city streets... applies not just to city streets, but also to city parking lots, for example. We deleted some definitions that weren't used. We added, did some other changes to the definitions, added "vehicle Hulk" into the definition of vehicle, so a non-functional vehicle is still something that would be regulated by the term "vehicle." We deleted the default penalty section and all the civil infraction language. As you might recall, last time, we talked about regulating parking with penalties that are civil infractions. But civil infractions quickly add up to a lot of money. The $125 civil infraction is actually $125 times 110% or something like that. So instead, what we've done in this draft is replaced the civil infraction language with parking infraction language, and set our own parking levels, or infraction levels in Article 7. So you'll see that the time limit section is $10. Some of the other sections are $20. One of the more noticeable penalties is parking in a handicap space, which is set by the state law at something like $450. But others vary, and they're within our purview to set. We increased the length of an oversized vehicle, because we have a section regulating oversized vehicles from 20 to 22 feet, on the advice of Chief Floyd, who noted that some vehicles, full-size F-350, you know, could be almost 22 feet long. We added "street abutting" in the definition of residential area to make it clear that we are regulating parking on the street, not the area within the street boundaries. We added prohibitions against parking on a sidewalk and between sidewalk and the street curb. Added prohibition on parking a vehicle for sale on Commercial Avenue, which is a line that's in our existing code. You can't park a vehicle and put a "for sale" sign on it on Commercial Avenue between, I think it's north of 34th Street. Maybe it's 36th. We split Section 360 into parking that's limited during business hours and parking limited at other times, because in our downtown area, we've got business hour restrictions, but then after the business hours are over, your parking is not so limited. We added a time limit for parking in Kiwanis Waterfront Park. That is another line that's in our existing code, but was a recent addition, so didn't make it into this draft, or the previous draft. And then because it's not actually parking, and we talked about this last time, but because it's not actually parking, we deleted the civil infraction for driving an oversized vehicle on the Washington Park Loop Road. If we want to regulate that, we should put it in the Park Rules chapter rather than in the Parking chapter. It used to, in the first draft, it worked, because we were using civil infractions, but now we're using parking infractions. So it's, driving on the Loop Road is not a parking infraction. And then in city-owned parking lots, rather than try to articulate in the code what the hours are, or what other parameters there might be for how long you can park in a city-owned parking lot, the proposal would simply delegate to the Director of Public Works the ability to establish those time limits, put up appropriate signage, and then ticket people based on compliance with the signage. And then the final line in Article 6, regulating towing of a vehicle used as a residence, was a constraint on city disposal of a vehicle used as a residence, if owned by the person who is using it as a residence, if not redeemed. And we deleted that, because we offer free redemption, as the case law more or less mandates, of vehicles that are towed when they are used as a residence. So if somebody just doesn't pick it up, even for free, what is the city to do with it? I think that there are a number of outstanding issues, and maybe you see others, but the ones I see are, did we get the penalty structure right? Are the costs right in that section in Article 7? I got a call just a couple of days ago about long-term storage of pod-moving containers on the street. So that's in there, but do we have the time limits right? It's covered by oversized parking and the 72-hour parking limit. Do we want to regulate trailers or use the oversized vehicle definition? So for example, especially around trailer parking lots, we prohibit parking of trailers on the street. Now, in the current code, we say "trailer," we say "pickup truck," we say "passenger car," we say "vehicle," we say "vehicle or trailer," we say "vehicle and trailer." So this draft tries to harmonize that. We use the word "vehicle," which is defined as the statute to encompass all of those, and if we want to do something less than that, then we do, then we use a different word. But do we want to regulate only trailers, or do we want to regulate oversized? How do we want to capture that? There are some places where we have trailer, no trailer parking signs, that are not covered by existing code. They even reference existing code, but they're not covered in those sections. 13th Street, north of McDonald's, is one of those. Maybe there are others. So if we want to prohibit trailers there, we need to get that into the code. I think we did receive an email about Coho Lane, which is out off of Sunset. They want trailers prohibited on that street. That's something surely that we could circle back to later, but it's also something we could address right now before passing this ordinance. Sands Way, as was just recently mentioned. And then the Parks Department notes that they've got signs on the Whistle Lake Access Road, because it's pretty narrow, regulating whether you can park on just one side, just on the south side of the Whistle Lake Access Road. And then also prohibit both sides parking on a small area on both sides of the road as you enter the main parking area. We do want to be able to issue tickets for those, and I'm assuming that the council wants to retain their authority to regulate where we say no parking and where we don't. And then finally, oversized parking generally, because oversized parking is attempting to get at the parking of trailers and RVs and boats, sometimes boats without trailers in residential areas. And those technically have been regulated for a long time. There's no exemption for parking your boat on the street forever. You're limited to 72 hours under our current code, and we're not doing that enforcement. But if we readopt the parking code, similarly, we should be able to expect enforcement of the things that we adopt. So do we have that provision right in the code as proposed? Or do we want to change how it's constructed to make sure that we're not regulating or prohibiting reasonable uses of the street, but we are regulating or limiting or prohibiting uses of the streets that really are incompatible with residential neighborhoods? So that's my list. I would propose we have some discussion about it, or maybe provide instruction to come back with more edits. We can do those maybe pretty quickly and have it on next week's agenda again.
Thank you for the summary, and I think, I know I have, you know, appropriate staff folks here to answer questions, but one of the things that came up was that, like you mentioned, the trailer definition, and I think, you know, we were talking about whether boat, we're really talking about boat trailers and whether that needs to be a separate definition, because we do define that, I think, and when we talk about fines for Washington Park parking, we specifically point out boat trailers. And I think that was the reason for a lot of those legacy signs for trailers, and they're different than other types of trailers. So that's something to think about for council, and then the illicit, you know, the impound for illicit discharge, I think, is kind of an important piece as well from the enforcement side. But that's enough for me, and of course, Chief Floyd is here to be able to talk about the enforcement stuff. But also, on that note, as I've mentioned before, we do have our halftime enforcement, parking enforcement person who is now on the clock. So the timing is good. Hopefully, council will get, you'll get this right, and then it won't be perfect. We know we'll miss some things, but over to you, council. Mr. Young.
Just a couple of comments. You know, the depth of the work that went into this, very appreciative. And, you know, I do think a hard look at the penalties associated with each of these would be something that I think deserves a deeper review of. I do think that the challenge that a city of our type faces is in enforcement, you know, and what I'm speaking about is that, you know, there are things that we have on the books, and we want to make sure that we can enforce those things equally and fairly. And so I think that that, given the fact that we have a new person on the books, as the mayor said, I think that we can begin to deal with some of the issues that are outstanding within the city. And the good news is that we have a mechanism of enforcement. Whether or not we will need to expand that, how well it works, is still up for review. But at the end of the day, I think it's pushing us forward in a good way as a city, and so, you know, those really were my only concerns, because I think at the end of the day, these are things that we definitely need. This is something long overdue, and I think it's a very good thing. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. One of the questions that I was just kind of having, and I'm not sure how relevant it is to this discussion, or if it's something that we need to think about, just really, really moving forward, had to do with, like, minimum parking requirements and the new changes that are being made within the legislature as we look forward to more density within different areas. So is this going to be, like, something that we think about as new developments go up? Is that something where the code gets updated once a year, every time we go back and look and we say, okay, there's three big developments that have happened, we need to relook at what guest parking looks like? And like, I understand the concept behind guest parking and resident parking, but at what point is it going to get too wieldy, unwieldy, or is that something we can push out, like, five, 10 years down the road? Other than that, I mean, it's, this is laid out wonderfully. It's really easy to read. There's still a few things that I'm not 100% familiar with, like, what about the big commercial vehicles that sometimes park over by T in the marine industrial area? Like, how is that, is that technically oversized? Is it commercial? Do commercial vehicles get a pass? Like, I couldn't quite understand some of the language in there, but that's questions that I've sent over to staff that we're working on.
Mr. Walters.
Maybe I might respond to some of that. So this chapter wouldn't adjust the number of parking spaces required for new development, because that would be in Title 19. Guest and residential parking is in the residential parking zones that are around the Guimas Ferry and around the High School. And I certainly think, and Ms. Swetnam and I have had some conversation about the pretty large number of permits that you can theoretically get in one of those residential parking zones, but we didn't try to really fix that in this rewrite of the chapter. We don't, I do not perceive a large number of complaints about that, so maybe it's working okay despite the high potential for a lot of permits. I think you could get nine permits per residence, which is, I think, four for your residents and five guests. And there's no distinction between the two. Guest permits aren't limited by the code to a less amount of time or fewer days per year, or anything like that. So that could be something that we might want to come back and address, but we didn't try to address it here, because we don't perceive it as a problem, and we can probably gloss over that going forward. And then your question was about oversized parking. So the oversized parking section only affects areas with existing residential development, the commercial marine zone, and some specifically called out areas that are not residential zones, but they have residential development. So it wouldn't affect T Avenue, for example, where it's not the south extent of T Avenue. The north extent, it would, where it's adjacent to residential development. So those constraints wouldn't apply to semi-trucks parked in our marine industrial area.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walters, for doing this, all of this work. So I'm wondering, so the yellow sections are, the yellow highlighted areas are ones that are things that we'll most, that we'll likely discuss, right? For example, about oversized vehicles, we've made, we've had discussions about time limit for oversized vehicles, and we've talked about everything from four hours to 72 hours and everything in between. So that's something that we'll likely want to dig into as a group.
Yes, the yellow highlights are where questions have come up. Try to highlight those, so you could quickly find them and then decide whether or not to pursue changes.
The good thing is, is there aren't, like, a whole bunch of those.
Yeah, so I'd certainly, you know, to help move this forward, like, if there's some concerns about particular, maybe areas of disagreement, and try to get consensus from council on those yellow items. But I also think, you know, there's probably a little opportunity to do a little more reading, and I'm not expecting you to pass this one tonight. Ms. Moulton, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Oh, thanks. I was just thinking, definitely, the, what I just mentioned about the oversized vehicles, and then the penalty, since that's a shift from our last look-through when it was a civil infraction, so I'd like to spend a little time with those also, and I think we should discuss those at a future meeting.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, so thank you, both staff and council member Walters and everyone. I really think that these tables are helpful, not only to us, but to the public, and it also allows us to make modifications as we hear from folks in different community areas. To Ms. Hubick's point, that one of the things I've heard a lot about is concern from neighbors when we start to see more infill, ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, things like that, is that what impact the on-street parking will have for existing neighborhoods. So the fact that we have that part-time parking enforcement, and the fact that we have this more cohesive, while still needing some refinement, chapter, I think will help alleviate, or hopefully allow for better conversation, right, to address those issues. So that's kind of one of my concerns. I think we need to probably just add in a number of those, the comments we've gotten about possibly those last few streets that might have concern. Do we have a process for looking at those requests, or should we just bring it back to council next week? Or have you given that any thought?
Yeah, I mean, I think because we have gotten recent inputs from the public, I certainly think that's a good idea. But I can tell you, when it comes to parking, we could have the perfect ordinance, and we will still get comments forever, and that's fine, but, because parking is always a very sensitive subject. So, yeah, we'll try to coalesce all the comments from the public and, you know, and bring it back next week, which is fine. So again, I'd encourage you, if you're watching, or tell your friends, to send, the best, one of the best ways is to send that email into all the council members and to get your comments.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters, and then Ms. Cleveland.
And our existing process on dealing with these types of parking issues has been, I think, to have them reviewed by the Traffic Safety Committee, which we had recently folded into the Public Works Committee, so that we could review them individually, because it's fairly frequent that people don't want other people parking in front of their house. But it is the public street, and so we need to, as a general matter, allow people to park. But where there's a neighborhood that has a special influx of boat trailers, you know, that are littered all over, you know, maybe we do want to have some constraints. I would suggest, you know, if there's something very straightforward that we can work into the table right now, that we do that. But if not, if we need to talk about it more, then let's talk about it more, come back, because these requests come in all the time, so we can stack them up and review them individually. I think, while we do have a bit of an audience here, it might be worthwhile going through the list of penalties, so that people have some flavor for what we're talking about. As I mentioned, parking in excess of time limits is proposed at $10. Parking in an alley, $25. Parking near the Guimas Ferry Terminal, in violation of the section about that, $25. Parking in a bike lane, over a sidewalk, or blocking a mailbox, $25. Parking in other areas where it's prohibited at all times, $50. Parking in a residential parking zone, those areas where you have special residential parking permits, $50. Parking a boat trailer at Washington Park, $50. Interfering with concealing or obliterating or erasing marks, the chalk... Interfering with concealing, or obliterating, or erasing marks, the chalk, chalking of your tires to identify whether you've been parked there too long, $50. And then, a couple are set by statute. Parking in an electric vehicle parking space, when you're not actually charging, is $124. Parking in a disabled space is $250, plus an additional $200 assessment. So that's a total of $450, set by statute. And then, the court rule for parking violations by default, if not otherwise specified, is $20. So that's what, based purely on my sense of it, and some statutory references, that's what I've put it in there at. But last time I got a parking ticket in Mount Vernon, the, the fee was $20, but if you paid it the same day, the fee was $10. And so they had created an incentive to actually pay off your parking tickets. That's a thing that we could consider. And then, section, subsection B, in the violations and penalties section, increments the fee. So for your first additional violation, within one year, an additional $10. For your second and third additional violation, $15. Fourth through six, $50. And then seventh, an additional violation's $100. So by the time you get seven parking tickets, you'd really be starting to build up quite, quite the debt to the city. And those numbers are based on Everett Municipal Code, and some of the, they have a fairly well-structured code, and that's what they charge. Payment of these infractions actually goes to the city, and payment of parking infractions is, are exempt from some of the statutory language that takes money from civil infractions, and gives, distributes it to everybody, like, the courts and the state and everything. So actually, the city would be able to retain some more money from these fees than it ordinarily would. Not suggesting it be a revenue source, but in Mount Vernon, it does, their parking tickets, even at a low amount, do pay for their parking enforcement officer.
Ms. Cleveland, did you have something, because I was going to acknowledge you before. Okay, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So I'm looking at parking in excess of time limits. The very first one is $10. So I feel like that's a pretty safe gamble, to park overtime and not get caught, or pay $10. I mean, to me, that's not really a deterrent. I don't know how other people feel about that.
Did I mention we're almost adding 50% to our parking enforcement staff? I mean, there is that.
Sure, but if you're a little bit of a gambler at heart.
So I think you're advocating for a higher penalty, perhaps?
I mean, also, I, I'm also aware that some people are more able to financially bear the results of a failed gamble than others, too, so I want to bear that in mind. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because, okay, personally, if it's $10, I, I don't usually do that anyway, like, to be clear. I really don't. But if I were so inclined, it's $10.
Mr. Young.
I mean, I, I hear, I hear you, Councilwoman Moulton. I, I am, you know, I'm reasonably frugal, I think that's how they say it, and, you know, I'm sort of a rule follower. And, you know, I, even though I know I'm pushing up to my limit, it's not out of my mind unless I totally forgot about it. And, you know, but if I know that I have this thing, it's going to gnaw at me until I finally just get up and go take care of it. And so I'm okay with, you know, changing that, you know, however you feel about it. If you really feel that it's not at a high enough bar, at the rest of council, I'm okay with that. My biggest challenge is, in all of this wonderfulness, and ways of encouraging appropriate behavior, that we have the ability to enforce it. You know, because I think at the end of the day, when, you know, just, it won't matter if we don't have someone that can write the ticket. It won't matter if we don't have someone that can kind of come out, you know, even though I know we've made a leap, in a wonderful way, to have brought on staff to be able to do this type of thing. You know, we do have rules of order in our city, and part of that is that I think, council, at some point, we really need to look at, at how efficient it is, in the sense that we're being able to enforce the laws, and then push them forward, and then even in that, collect the money. So, you know, but I, I am very happy. I, I just, again, that point of how much, I'm open to that, and so anything that we can come up with, to consider it a sufficient deterrent, I'm open to that. But I want to also make sure that we keep sight of our ability to enforce it, because it matters not if we can't enforce it. And so we want to look at how efficient that's happening, and, you know, how, you know, what we may do, need to do to help it be enforced. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton, and then Ms. Cleveland.
So, number 11 is all other parking violations are $20. So I think it would be reasonable to be parking in excess of time limits, $20 also.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yeah, so, I mean, $10, it's going to cost more for the city to collect that money than, than the $10 we collect, so that I, I would agree, at least $20. Parking in an alley seems like a safety issue, so I don't know if 25 is enough. I think it's pretty obvious if you are illegally parked in a, in an alleyway. I mean, that's not an innocent mistake necessarily, so I'm fine with making it a little bit more aggressive, especially because you're really disrupting the neighbors and garbage pickup and all of those things, and safety issues. I would, I would also say that about the bike lane, over a sidewalk, or blocking a mailbox. I mean, you don't need to even see a sign to know that you shouldn't be doing that. So those, those two for sure. The parking near Guimas Ferry Terminal, I don't know off the top of my head how, how much it costs to park in their parking lot. Does anyone know how much that costs?
All I know is, it's going up.
Right. So, to me, 25 bucks isn't that, I mean, you might be paying that anyway. So is, I, I know that if you do it repeatedly, obviously it goes up exponentially, but that's something we've heard a lot of concern with, from neighbors. So me, and that's, again...
So just to, sorry to interrupt, but just, I don't think it costs anything to park in that parking lot.
It doesn't? Okay. But it may cost something in the future. It's kind of the direction we're hearing.
The fare is going up for the ferry, that's...
So, so those are, those, one, two, three, and four, I'm inclined to push up a little bit higher. Two and four, because of safety concerns. And then, I'm curious how Mount Vernon, if you can pay the same day and have it, have it reduced, how are we expecting to collect that money, as a city?
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
And in Mount Vernon, you go to the municipal court and, and pay the amount there, and it might be within 24 hours, or something like that. However, keeping in mind that there's additional violation penalties for subsequent violations within one year, because, for instance, number four, parking over a sidewalk, if you walk down my street tonight, you will collect several hundred dollars. Because where there's no curb, it's very common that people park over the gravel parking strip, and extend over the sidewalk. And this is a real problem for people with limited mobility, who need to use the sidewalk. But it's also very common that it happens, because where there's no curb, it's, it's pretty easy for that to happen. Where there is a curb, I would agree, it's quite a bit more egregious. But we have a lot of streets that don't have curbs. So I would caution us on that, because there's also going to be a period of adjustment, you know, where people are not going to be familiar with these requirements. They've been parking over the sidewalk, for example, for maybe the entire time they've lived there. So I deliberately tried to err on the lower end here, with, you know, the, the additional costs if you get tickets more than once, because on your second offense, you have already been educated that, you know, that's noncompliant with our code. And parking in excess of time limits applies downtown, and I, I think that you've got to have some enforcement to actually make parking time limits downtown work, but some of those people will be tourists, too, who are not that familiar, they don't know maybe what the time limits are, aren't paying attention, or don't know that we enforce it. So I set that at 10, I mean, you know, whatever council wants to do, but my thinking was, we should start that pretty low as well. If, if you are a habitual offender of the 72-hour parking time limit, again, if you're habitual, you're going to start incurring quite a few additional penalties pretty quickly.
Yeah, I was going to make the comment, the habitual parking gambler might get affected by the paragraph B with the first and second and third additional violations, so...
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
I'm actually, I'm kind of intrigued by the Mount Vernon thing, where, is it really, you have to pay a physical visit to the municipal court? Is there an electronic payment option? Don't know.
QR code.
QR code, right, yeah. Because something like that could be feasible, but at the same time, you know, I'm relatively fine with everything. I mean, gamblers such as Ms. Moulton, myself, we get four shots, really, and then...
Before it really gets expensive.
Then it goes up.
All right, so I was, I was starting to try to poll the council about whether you wanted to go up on the fines, but I don't know where, where we are now.
Ms. Moulton?
Yeah, it was your original suggestion.
So another idea, I'm looking at additional violation costs. Your first additional violation is $10, your second and third are 15, your fourth through six are 50. What if we raise your second and third to 25, or something? Would that be kind of in line with where we're going?
Well, I'm, I'm getting a lot of head nods on that one. So, yeah, I think, okay, so rather than go with the paragraph A, paragraph B, it looks like $25 for B2, for second and third violations, $25. I think that's a nice compromise.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
I think that the parking in excess of time limits, if that's not something that we decide to raise to $20, this would be a good little walk-around project, possibly for the Economic Development Committee, because we have heard from the business community that people are sitting in parking spots, and sitting, and sitting, and sitting, and sitting. And so, give it a year, and go walk around and talk to businesses and see how they feel. I mean, we have free parking downtown, and actually installing paid meters is going to cost way more than any of this is going to. So let's just try it at 10, and then get some feedback, and see if we need to change it.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
To Ms. Hubig's point, thank you for mentioning that. You know, part of what the Economic Development Committee was also discussing is that we were going to do a walk downtown, and sort of meet with businesses, and just sort of see what their thoughts are, and, you know, what are their issues. So to that point, I think it would be a wonderful idea, I really do. Okay.
Ms. Cleveland.
I guess this is more interesting than I expected it to be. I, in the next year, too, I would like to see if there is a way to utilize that pay within 24 hours option, and then that would, I would be encouraged to bump it up a little bit, and then if you pay it in 24 hours, so the city doesn't have to follow up on anything, it's at a reduction of 50%. But that's something we can kind of play around with. I, I would like to make it as easy as possible for people to pay it.
No, we, we can look into the mechanics of, of doing that from the staff. Yeah. All right, are there any, that was a good discussion. Are there any other, I'm thinking the yellow points that council wants to address before we try to bring this back again in a week?
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Ms. Moulton specifically mentioned the oversized parking time limit, which is set in the proposal at eight hours, and whether it should be longer. So that's section 10 dot 12 dot 340. And that one, I mean, maybe we need more discussion later, it's a simple number, so we can quickly edit it even at the next meeting, but I think it's worthy of discussion now, if we are ready to have that discussion. The, the objective here is to say that, you know, that oversized vehicles, and the oversized vehicle definition comes from LA County, I think it is, with Chief Floyd's modification for his oversized F-350, with the full-length bed. That, that definition regulates all the big things. So if, if you're in a residential neighborhood with a more narrow street, with a lower, an expectation of a lower speed, hopefully, but we know that people drive quickly, if you've got visual obstructions in those streets, there's potentially a safety issue. If one's parked in front of your house, we get complaints. And under our existing code, for any of these types of vehicles that aren't simply a passenger car that you own, that is functional, you're limited to 72 hours, under our existing code. But this would limit it further, so that, you know, in the course of one day, if one of these things shows up and, and isn't otherwise exempt, APD could see it at hour zero, see it at hour eight, and ticket it. And so I want to note specifically, though, that if you own it, and it's parked in front of your house, you would only be subject to the 72-hour limit. If it's, it's not your ownership, or if it's not in front of your house, you've parked it in front of your neighbor's house, then that exception wouldn't apply.
Ms. Cleveland, I think.
Yeah.
And then, Mr. Young.
That was one point that I wasn't sure if we should talk about now or later, but I have heard complaints from neighborhoods where, as, when one, one homeowner is running essentially a business out of their home, and all of their work equipment that is oversized is coming and going at early times in the morning, right? So it's not only, it's not only a parking issue, but it's a sound and general enjoyment issue. Would this address that, with the eight hours, if it's from the end of business to the morning time, to be utilized?
Mr. Walters.
So if it's an oversized vehicle, it would be captured by this, but it would be limited to eight hours. So you could, under the proposal, the number is eight.
Yep.
So it could be parked there for that amount of time. So, we, we have been receiving these types of complaints forever, basically, and it was, you know, maybe 10 years ago that Mr. Meesmer drafted some code language and brought it forward to try to regulate, I think it was boat trailers in Island View. But also, the problem is that people need to have a place to put their boat trailer when they put their boat in the water, and we want to support people putting their boat in the water, because that's one of the reasons you live in Anacortes. So I think we need to be cautious here, and I did add a note, a blue note, that maybe we would want to exempt boat trailers, at least up to the 72-hour limit, which has been the existing code. I don't know. It, it can get sticky, because that is people's expectation, that they can park their boat trailer, especially in front of their own house, especially during boating season. So how do we manage that? I'm not 100% sure. We're going to have to make some calls here, but it's likely that people will be upset with how this shakes out.
I am confident that people will be upset, however this shakes out. Parking, parking is, the parking codes have been like the Holy Grail of municipalities, and, well, again, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, but we will not get it perfect, but I appreciate the, the work. Mr. Young.
Yeah, just to follow up on, you know, I'm agreeing with Ms. Cleveland McGrath, you know, in the sense that I think, as we look deeper into where we go from here, and how it will affect other things, I think we can begin to address those things. And also, I wanted to add, that I was looking out in the audience as this was taking place, and I was able to read the lips of one of the people out in the audience, as they mouthed one thing and did like that, so I'm assuming that that meant motorcycles. This applies, when you say vehicle, this also applies to motorcycles, correct?
That's a yes.
Yeah, good, good. Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
And Ms. Moulton.
I think eight hours is very short. I just keep thinking if someone came to visit a person, and they're on their way to the islands, or they're on vacation, and they want to park in front of your house, eight hours does not seem reasonable to me. I would advocate for 24, and I'm not opposed to 48, and I would consider it longer. I'd be really curious to hear what council has to say, and if we get any comments tonight, or over the course of the next week, before we decide, but we live in a place where people come for the summer, we live in, I mean, people are in RVs left and right, and center, all over the place, our families, our friends, people who need a place to, you know, so, so I'd like to be a lot more generous with that number. be a lot more generous with that number.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I agree with that. I mean, especially during beautiful days like this, our summer sunlight hours last forever. It's really easy to start, like a 6:00 AM hike or a 6:00 AM crab excursion, and then park somewhere and not come back to it until nine or 10 o'clock at night. 12 doesn't seem to fit that. 24 hours seems about right, but definitely open to a little bit more discussion on this, but eight seems much too short at this point.
Well, what I, what I'd like to do is kind of get the consensus, or at least majority, for a 24-hour, and then have time for people to comment on that, if that makes sense. Seemed some head nods there, since 24 seems to be a round number, so that's kind of what I think maybe Mr. Walters can put in his update. All right. What else do we want to try to tackle in this fun and fun-y yet challenging parking ordinance? Any of my staff, particularly Chief, anything you want to address on, since APD Dave Floyd on 10, 12, 640 is in the ordinance? So I want to make sure that the folks that we charge with enforcing this, make sure that, once again, communicating with council.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. So first, I have to apologize. I was out of town last week and was just getting my first opportunity to go through this in its entirety, as Mr. Walters was explaining it, and I was kind of working through that as he was laying it out. So first, the, the concerns that I had brought last time this was discussed, from what I can see so far, those have been, for the most part, addressed, and I appreciate that. Specifically, the discussion the council had as far as payment of those fines and the immediacy of that, perhaps we could have language that if you pay it within 24 business hours, you could be eligible for that discount. Just thinking, if that's issued to someone on a Friday afternoon, they would not have the ability to, to pay within 24 hours. So if it was 24 business hours, then we could work with our municipal court to take those, and, and the individual would get credit for their prompt payment. Beyond that, I don't have any further input at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure council's heard from the enforcement side. Okay, so what's council's pleasure to maybe, I think we tackled most of the big yellow items in here, or are there ones that I've missed?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, so that, one of them was trailer parking. We don't currently have a section in here devoted to trailer parking. I think that the relevant section is 380, parking prohibited by street segment. And there are two tables in there. One is any vehicle, parking any vehicle. And the second is any vehicle other than a passenger car. And that's where, in our existing code, we had some that were prohibitions on pickup trucks, some that were trailers, some that were anything other than a passenger car. So I harmonized all of those into anything other than a passenger car, and that is a definition in the statute. But do we want to make it, do we want to make it trailer? Or do we want to make it oversized vehicle, or something else? I don't, I don't care. But I, I wanted to highlight that for you, so that, so that we identify that issue.
Yeah, I think the boat trailer was the unique vehicle that doesn't seem to fit in any of those definitions, at least that was one, one read of it. And something that's obviously important in Anacortes, we have a lot of boat trailers around.
And so the area, north of McDonald's, 13th Street, north of McDonald's, is signed, no trailer parking, so it's not in the existing code, but I would add that in here with head nods in the next draft. But still, should we be prohibiting trailers or oversized vehicles in these areas that previously said trailers? And what about the one that said pickup truck?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. So is Ninth Street where the, where scat buses go? Is, I feel like I need to look at these places in real life to be able to have a good opinion on them.
Yeah.
Or maybe on a map at our next meeting, so everyone can see.
Ms. Moulton, I believe the scat bus stops that you're thinking of are on 10th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I feel like I need a visual.
Mayor Miller.
Oh, Ms. Hewick.
Thank you. I did want to just mention that through the Anacortes Municipal Court, that we already have a system set up for online payments, where people are able to put on, in the citation code, and go ahead and make a payment that way. There is a fee associated with that through the company that we utilize, but it would be a system that would already be in, in place, where we could just put that citation number with a, with a link.
So, so technically, we, we probably have the ability to make that happen. All right, great. I don't know about the, yeah, but we might need a little staff time to put some maps together with that, with this, but I don't know if we can do it in a week. Ms. Moulton.
I was going to say, I mean, this was already in the code, so obviously, there is a reason why it's there already, so I don't know how much work we need to add to it, but it's, it is hard to picture.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Ninth Street between Q and R is where we recently installed new sidewalk on the way to the farmer's market. And I imagine trailer parking was prohibited in that area, because it's right adjacent to the port's trailer parking lot.
Okay, that's enough for, that's ample for me to note.
Mr. Young.
The only thing I want to add to that is, I love this discussion. It's, you know, I know we're trying to get it right, we're trying to make it work for the city, and, you know, just to make sure that we have the continuity that we want. But I think I would be remiss if I didn't, I say that, you know, we are all aware that sometimes there are individuals within our city that have had their boat in the middle of the street for at least the seven years I've been here, and it's never moved. And so all I'm saying is that, you know, we should look at, at cars or whatever it is. I just want to make sure that we don't give a pass for that at such a long term, because I just thought it's important to mention that, because I think we all see that from time to time. Everybody's got stuff in front of their house, I get it, you know? You know, I've got a bag of mulch, I've got to move out from my driveway, but my point is that we want to make sure that we're not giving a pass to that behavior as well. So, and, and this is just the beginning of this reading, and so I know we got a lot to dev, dev into.
Well, like I said before, this is a great opportunity to, to mesh with our additional help with parking enforcement, as council provides this new code. So I think I'm pretty confident we'll be able to start addressing some of those longstanding problems. So, again, I guess that's a verbal warning to folks that might be listening and violating parking codes.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
One last thing, I'm fine without having the maps, but I think that maybe we would want to say oversized vehicle there, and does that include a trailer? I'm not clear on that. It does. So that, to me, seems reasonable, but of course, I want to hear what other people have to say.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
It includes a trailer if the trailer is oversized. So a small trailer might not, might not be within those dimensions. But, so, I mean, we could pretty easily rewrite this to say tra, boat trailer. Current code says trailer and doesn't define trailer, but, you know, we'd try harder than that. So, you know, this section could prohibit boat trailers in these particular areas. And then at least, we would have a structure for where we do prohibit boat trailers, because currently, we don't have that structure. It's passenger cars or, you know, those kinds of things.
Ms. Cleland, did you have something, or Ms. Moulton?
I mean, now we're getting in the weeds, right?
Well, yeah.
So like, the boat trailer, I get between, on Ninth Street, between Q and R, but if you have a dog and you're in a, a small trailer and you need to go use a dog park, you can't park there now, like, you know, it gets to be a little bit cumbersome. So just throwing that out there. I feel like we've really talked about this a lot.
Okay. I think, I think that's a good segue to, we, we've got a decent amount of information. We'll bring it, we'll make our best effort to bring it back next week. So if you have any additional comments, again, send them in. All right? Council, you all right if we move off of this one? Okay. All right. Yeah, we do have like nine other items on the agenda tonight. So thank you for that discussion. We'll bring it back, we'll plan on bringing it back next week. So next up is item 6C, which is a contract award Senior Activity Center Pavilion. This is an action item, and it's kind of a companion item to 6D, ordinance 4056. And that was me dragging out the time, so Mr. Lunsford could get up to the dais. Mr. Lunsford, you are up and you, oh, it's taking a long time to load, so, oh, there you go.
It's worth the wait, Mayor.
Hey, all right. I'm counting on it.
Okay, thank you all, Mayor Miller, council members. So I have with me tonight, Mr. Wolfswinkle. We're going to introduce some of the items we'd like to talk about tonight regarding the Senior Activity Center. The first up is the contract for a new picnic shelter slash pavilion. So I'll let Mr. Wolfswinkle take over the show, and I'll come back with the ordinance.
John, Mayor, council, members of the audience. Like John mentioned, I'm Carl Wolfswinkle, the administrator at the senior center, and I'm just going to provide a little quick overview and an update of what we've, what we've had going on here since the last time I was standing in this room, about a few months ago, and also talk about a special project that we had, that we're working on. So our mission, again, is to create a place where seniors thrive. We do that by offering services and activities every day of the week, 8 to 4. We have 100 to 200 visitors per day. In June, we averaged about 127. In May, 132 per day. We also have a nutrition program for in-person meals and a Meals on Wheels program that serves up to 85 people in the community every day. Just a quick highlight on a few photos that we have here. So these are examples of programs. We have these gentlemen playing chess, of course. Bonnie Nelson, you may recognize her, she was one of our award recipients tonight in her other job, when she's not doing Fourth of July parades. She runs our Aging Mastery Program, and this is our graduating class from the spring. And of course, this is our own Mayor Miller, presenting about the senior center, at the senior center, so kind of a fun photo. Next slide, please. Uh-oh. There we go. A few upcoming events and programs. In August, we have a retired science professor, Jim Strong is his name, he's teaching a course called Different Views of the Earth. He's going to look at different computer models and does a lot of background research on rivers, marine traffic, ocean weather, et cetera. We're looking forward to that. Center celebrates 50-year, or 50th anniversary this year. We have an anniversary celebration scheduled for September 30th. Tell you a little bit more about that momentarily. We have Fall Prevention Week going out to October now. Usually, we host that in September, but we are offering that in October. Fall prevention, especially for seniors, is a hot topic. The implications of taking a fall are, you know, are very significant, so we have professionals in breath and balance, safe walking, medication, safety, et cetera, coming in to speak to us during that week in October. Other ongoing opportunities, as I already mentioned, Mayor Miller comes in bimonthly. His next meeting will be on the 26th of this month at 1:30 in the afternoon. Mandy Hubick will also be joining us on the 16th of August, chat with a councilperson event, and then other games and exercise and arts programs, and a link to our newsletter, seniorcenter.cityofanacortes.org for other ongoing opportunities. Just want to share with you a few wins and challenges that we're facing as an organization. So just want to mention, I maybe mentioned this before, but in my two, almost two years as administrator at the center, I was really struck by the fact that people come to visit us from other states and other cities, and their ability to connect with the community at the senior center factors in their, into their decision to moving to our community. That's really powerful and profound, I think. And we've seen really an uptick of that in the last 30 days, especially, it seems like, people that have moved to this town. We've given, probably in the last 30 days, maybe 20 or so tours to individuals and, and families that are, you know, that are just looking for a place to connect, and they're finding us. So we're, we're thankful for that. I'd also be remiss not to mention the foundation support. We've got a couple of members of our audience tonight that are, that serve on that, on that foundation. They are volunteers, and without their important work, and without the donor base that they connect with, we would not be able to do some of the things that we do. I was working earlier today on about 13 projects that will hopefully come to fruition in the years to come, to serve our community better and our seniors. Our volunteers, so as mentioned, we do have a, a small staff at the center, but we have about 100 volunteers that work on the front and the back end, serving meals, staffing the front desk, et cetera. And without their dedication, we would not be able to do what we do. And I already mentioned the wellness committee and our 50th anniversary. A couple of challenges, and, you know, if I do this presentation five years from now, maybe some of these will be here again, or still, but I just want to, you know, we do recognize them. The good news is, we are working on these actively every day, and some of those programs that I mentioned that we're developing will directly address these as well. One is branding, and just kind of the idea of what is a senior, and am I a senior? Somebody at 79 years old might not consider themselves in our target market, but they very, very much are. The reality is, we don't put a number on it, because it depends what circle you, you find yourself in. Sometimes, some say 55, some say 65. We're not really worried too much about that. In fact, we're, we're all about intergenerational programming. But nonetheless, we try to, to get the word out and connect with people out in the community, do presentations, and just be where the people are. Isolation is still something that we're seeing. COVID is still a thing, for example. We are, so we're looking at programs to, to connect with people in the community. Last time I was here, just a few months ago, we had a hybrid technology that we're hoping to install now by the end of this, this summer, to connect with people at home that just aren't ready to come in, or maybe are homebound for other reasons. Caregiver support, again, something we hear about every single day. That's really a challenging role, obviously very rewarding as well, but want to provide support as best we can. And then technology, we mentioned as well. So here's the project that we're talking about today. If you hadn't been to the center before, or at least in a while, you'll, you'll see on the top right there, there's a photo of, previously, we had a playground, which we don't utilize very much anymore, but when the building was designed initially, it was a preschool, essentially, or a learning center, that part of the building, anyway. This is the northeast corner of the building. We have since removed that infrastructure that allowed us to spill into that area. This is a, a photo from last summer on the bottom. We did a volunteer appreciation event. And this, this topic has been stirring for about two years now. We did a survey last year to find out, okay, if, what's your vision for, for this specific area? We looked at options such as outdoor playground, outdoor exercise equipment, you know, exercise bikes, balance beams, that sort of thing. But really, people just wanted a place to sit and, and be with their friends and, and have activities. So here's the plan that we came up with and the, the project that's in front of us tonight. So on the left-hand side, this is actually a kit, a pavilion kit. It's a 16 by 20. It'll go in this space marked there by the orange markers, so we'll have to do a little bit of groundwork, including taking out some of the sidewalk. It'll go 16 wide and 20 feet deep, north to west, north to south. And then on the right-hand side is an existing structure that we hope to upgrade as well. By the numbers, so construction costs, based on the, the bid that we have in front of us, construction costs will be just over, over $59,000, permit and site plan fees, et cetera, for a total estimated cost of about $65,198. The senior center foundation has agreed to pay up to $63,198 to cover these costs, leaving us with no more than $2,000 as a city for the entire project. And finally, my parting shot here, of course, we can answer any questions if we have those, but my parting shot, just for any members of the audience, you may ask, how can we get involved? So again, be one of those people that comes to visit us, so it doesn't matter if you're 60 or 70 or anywhere in between, please come and see us, join a class, volunteer. You can donate, again, that could be your time, or financially, to special projects that we have going on, be of the foundation. We also have a couple of special events coming up. I had mentioned the 50th anniversary on Saturday afternoon on the 30th of September. That will be an open house concept with refreshments and some speakers. But we also have a special event, we'll be at Washington Park next week with special music on the 24th at Sunset Beach at 11 o'clock. Hope you can join, hope you can join us. There's my There's my contact information, and if there's any questions, please let me know.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Wolfswinkle, or you're going to turn it back to Mr. Lunsford for the contract questions? Questions for you one, yeah, Ms. Molton.
I just want to say, that looks fabulous, and many thanks to the, the foundation for their generosity. And I think prob, part of that money probably came from that awesome unconventional runway show. So thanks to the community for making it possible also. So this just looks fantastic. Thanks, Carl, for that good presentation.
Yes, thanks, Carl, for the great presentation. I know chat with Mayor Miller sounds very formal. I like to say it's chat with Matt, but you know, you can still, it sounds a little more reasonable.
Has a good ring to it.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Lunsford, you want to answer any questions about the contract or council?
Sure. If council has any questions, our request is that, if you have no objections, we are encouraging you to accept the contract so we can engage the contractor to move this along. So if you have questions, we're happy to answer them before we move to the next item.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
My only question was about the actual landscape. Is all of the ground going to get completely covered? Or is there going to be like planting areas, maybe raised planar beds installed in the future?
Sure, we'd love to do that kind of landscaping. So we'll, we'll create the space. We were going to just grass it for now, and then as the seniors, usually as organic, they see what they like to do, and that informs what we should do and build for them. So, thank you for that question.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
I move that the council authorize you to sign the contract as presented with New Creations in the amount of $59,480.96 for the Senior Activity Center Pavilion. Just a second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Ms. Hubick to authorize my, me to sign the contract with New Creations LLC for, to construct the Senior Activity Center Pavilion as presented. Any additional discussion, Mr. Walters?
I'm a member of the Senior Center Foundation Board, so I'll be abstaining from this vote and the next one. I would note, though, that this project is in excess of $20,000. Really should be in the capital facilities plan. But since it's fully funded, we have no real upfront cost, just ongoing costs. So, I urge your support, anyway.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Franciac, could you take a vote, please?
Mr. Walters?
Yes. I mean, abstain.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next up is 6D, which is the ordinance, companion ordinance 54056, accepting donations for the Anacortes Senior Activity Center. Anything else we want to add there, Mr. Lunsford?
No, just thank you to our partners at the Senior Activity Center Foundation. They, we, we could not do this work without them. The fundraising that they do, the work they do throughout the year to help with other programs, they're an integral part of what we do. And we're grateful to all the volunteers who are here tonight supporting this, and the folks who assist them throughout the year, the various events they do to raise funds for the Center, to allow us to do Aging Mastery, to build this pavilion. This pavilion will also be named in honor of Sally Hill, our longtime Administrator at the Center for 33 years, I want to say. So, this, this ordinance is in alignment with our requirement to bring donations over $10,000 to you. And so, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Looking for a motion, counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
I move for the approval of the acceptance of the donations of $65,000.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Carter, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve ordinance 4056, which authorizes the acceptance of the $65,000 donation from the Senior Activity Center. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote, please.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Molton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. We're moving right along. Only five more items on the agenda. Item 6E, interlocal funding Norse Milk Pump Drainage Study. This is a discussion item with possible action, and this is Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Mayor.
With 800 slides, all right.
Yeah, only, only nine, only 890. So, thank you, Mayor Miller, and council, and members of the audience. So, this tonight is an interlocal agreement to fund a drainage study to evaluate the drainage basin that, that feeds water to the Norse Milk Pump. So, for background, and I'm going to show you a map in just a second so you can visualize this, but there's a pump between the gas station and highway, or the, the golf course and Highway 20. And Skagitia County has been maintaining that, that we're calling the Norse Milk Pump Station, since they entered into an agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation going back to 1972. Subsequently, there have been a number of agreements and a number of discussions that have happened about this pump and who should be responsible for it. There, there was an agreement some number of years ago between the county and the Swinimish Indian Tribal Community that the tribe would pay for the utility costs for the ongoing operation of that pump. The county, within the past year, notified the Washington State Department of Transportation, the Swinimish Indian Tribal Community, and the City of Anacortes that they no longer wish to operate that pump, and that they will discontinue operating it effective what has been extended to be September 30th of 2023. I'll just provide a little bit of context. A couple of years ago, they had to replace the pump, and I believe the cost of that was just shy of $200,000. And so, the county's taken a look at this. They noted that Anacortes annexed this area back in 1998, and so the county no longer feels that's their, that it is their sole responsibility to pay for this pump. The other interesting thing about this, which there are many, is that the pump itself is located on, on land that's owned by Washington State and managed by WashDOT. So here is a map, thanks to our GIS department for putting this together to help understand where this is. You can see this is the bay. This is the golf course. Sharp's Corner is here. This is Christiansen and Marches Point Road. The pump station is right here. And you can actually see kind of in the bay where the drainage flow has come from that. So, so I think the way that it works is, the, according to Washington Department of Transportation, there is already drainage built into the, the highway itself. And so the pump doesn't prevent the highway from flooding, but it does prevent water from accumulating on the golf course and, and causing damage there. Just to provide some additional history, this came from the Anacortes Museum Collection. We think it's from 1929, but this shows, kind of on the far end of the photo here, is the area where Highway 20 was later constructed, and this was the golf course. I just threw that in for interest, more than anything. So the interlocal agreement that's in your packet tonight is to fund a drainage study that will evaluate the drainage basin contributing to the pump. The parties have met, there have been multiple meetings about this issue, including a meeting of attorneys for each of the organizations. And, but kind of the discussion was that really there can't be any, you know, clear communication or clear plan forward about who should be responsible for this until the parties really understand what the source is of the water that drains to this pump. There, there's, you know, potential liability for multiple parties if the tribe were to file suit based on damage from the water that accumulates on the, on the golf course. And so that's what started this discussion about the drainage study. The tribe solicited proposals from two different firms, and the parties kind of unanimously agreed on the one that was not, that was most reasonably priced, which was with Lurvik Engineering for a total cost of $11,040. The city, city portion of that, which was discussed with the former Public Works Director, Hash, and the Public Works Director, I believe, for the county, was that the city could pay 25% of that drainage study cost, which is $2,760. And then the county and the tribe would split the other remaining 75% for $4,000 each. The parties will then have access to the study, and that will inform any future discussions about pump maintenance and operations. I think the, the, kind of the concerning issues here are that the county has indicated that they're no longer going to operate the, the pump starting going into the wet season at the end of September. And it's really hard to have a discussion about who should be operating this pump until there's a better understanding of where, where the drainage is coming from. So, I spent a fair bit of time talking with the attorneys for the other agencies, and wanted to be really clear that this interlocal agreement didn't, didn't obligate the city to do anything other than to fund 25% of this drainage study. And so, I believe this has been approved by county commissioners, as well as the tribe, as presented in the packet. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, the last picture on that slide, sorry, that was the pump that just got replaced. That's, that's how big this thing is a couple of years ago, so.
Mayor Miller. And the reason this is before you all, obviously, because it's an interlo, interlocal. It's not the dollar amount. But, Mr. Young?
Thank you. Ms. Swetnam, would you go to the slide just before this one?
Certainly.
Okay.
The map?
Before that. No, what I was, thank you. What I was looking at is the timeline that the county was saying that they would no longer be able, you know, wanting to manage it. And so I was looking at, did we really have time for the study? Meaning, the study to be done, and we have some results before the county says we're not going to be bothered with it anymore? Do we have time to have some results from a study to make some determination as how we want to go forward, who may or may not be responsible, and how we sort of process it from there?
That's, that's an excellent question. Thank, thanks for that. So, the tribe contracted with Lurvik Engineering, and I believe they've already entered into that contract and are, and are already working on that study, so. And I, the, the parties were very clear with them that there is some, some time pressure here on this, and that we need to get it back in time to be able to take that information back to our respective agencies and, and work through the details, so.
Ms. Cleland?
Since you've been in these discussions, I'm curious, does Lurvik Engineering have experience, have experience with kind of hydraulic, like the hy, the water hydraulic issues, right? I mean, that seems like a very specific expertise of understanding where that water is coming from. And major, I mean, usually it's a, it's a high tide, or it's a major storm. That's my first question. Part of me understands the reason we should be included so that we do have access to that information. And if it's a study that we should be aware of, then yes, I can understand how we have some level of responsibility to, to pay for it. I'm curious to know if you have any more insight to DOT's feeling of responsibility for this project. Technically, the, I know this because this used to be family property of mine, so full disclosure. It's no longer, hasn't been for almost, for 10 years now. But where it's located, that property is in the county. The only thing on the golf course that is technically part of the city is the clubhouse parking lot, right? So, I, I, I wonder how, based on the study of the cause and the need for that pump, how much is the city really kind of responsible, other than it's a connection by the state route 20? If you have any, can you tell me about that?
Okay, so I'm going to try to get all of your questions. Number one, Lurvik's background. I believe that there was some discussion of that, and I'm, I'm looking at the back because interim Public Works Director, Tim Homan, was part of that discussion. But I, but I think there was, was a, you know, evaluation of the two contractors that, that the, you know, the parties talked with about their experience doing that. So, I don't know, Tim, if you want to.
Mr. Homan, you want to jump in? Yes, the staff has been spending lots of time on this, trying to, and then ultimately agreed that this funding part of this study was the right way to go to get to the next big question. Sorry, Mr. Homan.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council. Tim Homan, City Engineer and interim Public Works Director as of today. So, thank you for having me. Yes, so, staff, before we ended up, unfortunately, in the legal departments of the, we began in the Public Works Departments of, of many of these agencies, beginning this discussion. So, this, this analysis is going to provide kind of the upstream, what's going on upstream of the actual pump itself. So there are, the drainage basin extends beyond the limits of the golf course. But I would say, there's no full analysis been done of that whole drainage basin to understand both the area that resides within the city, as well as within the county, as well as within the state highway, and what quantity of flows are attributable to each of those areas. So that's kind of the, the definition that we're looking for from this drainage study. Yeah, Lurvik was, is qualified. He is a registered civil engineer in the state of Washington. So he, he has that capability, and purportedly, and should be able to provide that analysis. Did you have any more questions that I missed, because I was walking up?
Any other questions? Mr. Walters?
At first glance, I thought this was fairly straightforward. It's 2,500 bucks, it's $10,000. Maybe we should have just cut a check for $10,000 and moved on. However, the scope of work in Exhibit A says, "See the attached Smilk Bay Pump Station Scope of Services." We don't have that in our packet. Not particularly concerned about that. What I'm more concerned about is the paragraph that precedes that in the scope of work, that talks about the parties to this agreement, recognizing and agreeing that this agreement is not going to affect the delineation of jurisdiction boundaries described in the attached scope of work that we don't have. And the reason this is particular, particularly important is because the Swinimish Tribe has claimed as part of their reservation, the golf course, Marches Point, the refineries, a lot of the City of Anacortes, and the City of Anacortes' urban growth area. And Mayor Gier and I went back to Washington DC a couple of years ago to lobby the federal government to make sure that that wasn't recognized as part of the Swinimish Historic Reservation. So my question is this. What does that scope of work say about the jurisdictional boundaries?
Yeah, my, my apologies for, for that not being included in the packet. I think that might have fallen victim to some, some packet stuff last week. But, the scope of work was prepared by Mr. Lurvik and described the specific action items that he was going to do to evaluate the drainage basin. So, and I, I've reviewed it, and there was nothing particularly troubling, but I, I certainly understand the concern, and staff is happy to, you know, bring, bring this back next week. We can put it on the consent agenda, or we can, you know, put it under other business, but.
So, I think this is worth highlighting, because even with this paragraph, I would not feel comfortable voting for anything that included an attachment that did say that the golf course, the gas station, and the entirety of Marches Point is within the jurisdiction of the tribe's historic reservation. Because, A, I believe that not to be true, but B, that isn't a position that I think the City of Anacortes should endorse ever. And even with this disclaimer, I wouldn't want to endorse it. So, if you could tell me that you're sure that that's not in there, then I'm fine with it. If we need to go back and check, I think we should wait a week.
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, the, the scope of, it was the scope of work that was prepared by Mr. Lurvik, and, you know, I, I think caution is probably good. I, I did not see anything objectionable in it, and I was, I was a part of that work about the, the concerns about the reservation boundaries. And so, that, that would have been something that, that I would have flagged. But I'm happy to go back and double-check that. I, I think that's reasonable.
Can you speak to the provenance of this paragraph at the beginning of Exhibit A?
Yeah, I.
Because that's what flags it for me, so.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think the, I think the, that that was kind of intended to address the fact that there was, you know, the issue of annexation of that area by the city, and, you know, the fact that this agreement isn't going to change any of the boundaries of county versus city area. I think that was the intent of it. But it, but again, I mean, I think it's. But again, I mean, I think it's, I think it's reasonable to be cautious on that point. So staff is happy to go back, take a double look at that, include that in an updated version for next week and make sure that there aren't any concerns in the scope of work.
So I guess I'd be okay authorizing the mayor to sign it, but maybe the mayor could hold off on actually signing it until you take that second look.
Sure.
Yeah, we can, we can do it either way. You can authorize us to do that and to make sure that that language is not there, I think. Or we can put it on the consent agenda next week. It's council's choice.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young, and then I think Mr. Homan wants to add something.
Oh, okay. No, hearing Mr. Walters' concern duly noted, I agree. And also, you know, I know that, you know, that the work that's gone into trying to address this issue in expedient manner in order to move things forward, I recognize that too. However, where I may differ with Mr. Walters in lieu of additional information, I personally believe that once the tribe owns its property, the tribe as a sovereign government deserves the right to do it their way. And I struggle with that because there was a one point in the past where the tribe had owned land for many years and simply was trying to move it into trust. But we weren't clear whether we wanted to even sign a letter to say that it's okay with us when everybody else had. You know, those are, for me, issues of fairness. You know, it's not, I recognize that we do have concerns because, you know, again, a tribe is an autonomous government within itself. But, you know, there are methodologies that we work together. We do many things with the tribe here in Anacortes. And also, you know, Swinnumish has got their issues just like any government does. But I want to assert my concern that we recognize those things and do whatever is possible, particularly when the tribe already owns property and they're trying to move it into a certain direction that they believe that they need. I think, you know, sometimes we need to explore that a little deeper, but, you know, I'm one that believes that we should give some deference with check to that approach.
Yeah, so, sorry, that was louder than I anticipated. I don't believe that the scope of work goes into details like that. And I just wanted to clarify that the golf course is, the tribe purchased shares in an LLC that holds the golf course. So I don't think there's any discussion about a fee to trust process for this area. They've continued to hold, you know, the controlling interest in the corporate entity that owns the golf course.
And Ms. Swetnam, that is also why we rely upon you so fabulously so and the great job that you always do for us. Thank you. That's important. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask?
Ms. Cleveland.
Just for clarification, has the city taken any responsibility historically for this pump financially?
Not that I'm aware of, no. The agreement that, under which the county's been maintaining the pump was put in place back in 1972. And the city really hasn't had anything to do with this pump up until, you know, now we're having this conversation, but.
So I just find that curious, right? That as the county exits, what is our real response? That just seems like an important conversation to have is why have we been identified as new partners in this project that I think we need a little bit more clarity on?
Yeah, that's a really good point. And to circle back to a question that you had earlier about WashDOT's involvement in this, we actually, the attorneys for the tribe, attorneys for the county, and I met with representative from the AG's office. And there was certainly an openness to a discussion about responsibility. The WashDOT's position, I think, is that this is not typically the type of responsibility that they take on in, you know, their role of managing highways. But I think everybody agreed that it's really hard to pin down who's responsible for this until there's a better understanding of where the water comes from that, you know, that ends up getting addressed by this pump. So I absolutely agree, there's much bigger conversation that needs to happen. And I think once the study's done, you know, then there will be an informed discussion to be had at that point, so.
Your reaction was very similar to my reaction to this, but this is a study to get to where we have a better understanding of.
And mine as well.
So we can take it two ways. You can authorize us to move forward or we can bring it back and put it on the consent agenda after we make, ensure we review the attachment that's not in here. Suggestions? Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mayor Miller, you're clairvoyant. You know, I think that if, if time isn't as much of the essence, I think that those questions that you, that Mr. Walters brought up, and I think that if I'm correct, you had something you were going to take a look at and maybe bring it back if that's not an issue, I'm okay with that.
I think that's fine. I think it's important that council feel comfortable with this agreement moving forward. And I would, I would prefer you all to feel completely comfortable with the language in that scope of work. And like I said, I don't believe that the city's approval of the interlocal is holding up the work on the study itself, so.
Yeah, we'll plan on bringing it back for consent and feel free to ask any questions because I'll be happy to answer some of those. Okay, we are on to Item 6F, Ordinance 4057, Accepting Donation From the Library Foundation. This is a discussion item with possible action. And this is Mr. Vogel.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I don't have a slideshow. I'm hoping the ordinance speaks for itself. We're really excited that the Library Foundation is wanting to potentially move forward the idea of a teen area remodel. And they want to start with a contract with Underwood and Associates to architecturally design the teen area, get it engineered and up to bid level. Included in the contract is a cost estimate so they can have an idea of the potential cost of it all, the feasibility kind of before going out to bid. The contract's already made its way through the contracts department. It's $33,001 and it's ready to go and just waiting for your approval for the ordinance to fund it. And just a couple of things that came up in a subcommittee. It's not on the CFP and it should be, so it will be. This is a project that would entirely be funded by the foundation, so this is not a, it wouldn't be a city-funded project. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Walters.
And the other consideration is we're not adding on to the library, we're remodeling inside the library.
That's correct.
So assumedly, we're not really creating additional new operation maintenance or replacement costs.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, I mean, basically, we're creating like an enclosed space for the teen. Right now, the teen area, the feedback we're getting from teens, they love the library, they love what we're offering, but the teen area is pretty lame. I don't think they use that word anymore, but, so they want a space that they can collaborate in, they want a more enclosed space, they can be noisy in, they want a meeting room space, that's a collaborative meeting room space, and we're hoping to provide all of that through this design, so.
Again, just reminds me how fortunate we are to have all these great foundations that help support, improve the services that we provide.
Absolutely, yeah.
Counsel, any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you for describing it a little bit more. I like hearing about what they want and that that's something that will be provided for them. And thanks, of course, to the foundation and all the people who contribute. And I move to approve Ordinance 4057, authorizing acceptance of the donation from the Library Foundation.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to approve Ordinance 4057. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Are we, are we intent on calling it a teen center or is it simply the teen section of the library?
I think, I mean, that's, we are not confident about what we're going to call it yet. That's part of the design process for sure. And I'm really excited to actually bring the design to you all. I don't have, we don't have anything yet, but I'm excited to bring it to you all and present it.
And will we be involving teens in the design?
Absolutely, yeah. This whole project originally came out of our old strategic plan and it was all teen-driven.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to approve Ordinance 4057, accepting restricted funds. Mr. Franciac, would you take the vote, please?
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. All right, next up, Item 6G, Resolution 3127, Designating a Creative District. This is a discussion with possible action and Mr. Coleman will introduce this item.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, council. So tonight we have something very exciting to talk about is a potential creative district in the city of Anacortes. And to talk about this tonight, it's Meredith McIlmoy of the Anacortes Arts Festival is going to explain a little bit about what the creative district is and what it does. Enough, or do you want me to give a little more intro? I'll try to talk a little slower as we load her.
The trick of the intro is make the intro as long as it takes to load the presentation, so.
Emily.
All right.
Thank you, John. My name is Meredith McIlmoy and I'm the Director of the Anacortes Arts Festival, Mayor and Council. And guests, I think a good number of you have already heard some extensive information about the creative district. John gave me three to five minutes. I could talk about this for hours because we've been working on it for so long, but it is 8 o'clock at night. So I'm going to move a little rapidly through my presentation since the lodging tax committee and the planning committee have already seen this, making sure everybody else is up to speed about what we've been up to. So tonight, I'm here to ask you to approve and sign the proclamation that's in your packet, which is designating a creative district in Anacortes and giving the Anacortes Arts Festival permission to make this application to the state of Washington. So this is the last piece of the puzzle. The application is done and complete. It has taken us more than 200 hours and two years to get the application together, which I'll show you. And so with this piece that we'll submit and with your approval, it will go to the Washington State Arts Commission Committee in the month of August for approval. At that time, we hope to be approved and John and I will come back with celebratory information for you. So my brief so that everyone is comfortable, the creative district, oh, and I always stink at this, I'm sorry. So the creative district was designed by our legislature in 2017. Its purpose was to encourage the growth of the creative economy through our state because we already had really huge growth. The GDP for the creative industry is at 8.7 now, I think. And so the state recognized that this is a place where we can really grow our economy, so let's put some effort toward it. Let's have cities and other areas work to designate space that we can then support through marketing and other ways. So this gives us, if we are given this district, we're called a creative district. So what a creative district really is, is it's kind of a heart of a community. It's a place where art and culture lives. It's a place where creative businesses thrive and survive. It's a place where people come together and celebrate and it can include the businesses and the cultural facilities. So we have designated our space in downtown and I'm realizing I don't think I have the new map in here. So is that, is that in there? It was in the resolution, it was a part of the packet. So we've worked to designate the area where we have been able to encompass a good majority of the creative businesses in our central business corridor. It has to be walkable. So we know that there's things outside of this area that would count, including the Art Center at Buxton's, including Basham Brewery, you know, there's other things that will happen outside of this district. That's okay with the state of Washington. Our original designation just has to define a walkable area and we think that we've captured it from where the cruise ships come in and Dakota Creek Boat Building, up to the museum and Act Theater, over to, down to Seafarers and Cap Sani so that we're capturing the marina and their concert series and the boat industry. So a creative district in general, Washington State, the Arts Commission, it's really there to grow the creative economy. At the end of the day, they want to see revenue, they want to make sure that we're, you know, being successful in the number of businesses and how much those businesses are making. It's a really great way to attract more creatives to our, to our city. We went to a creative district convening a few weeks ago in Port Townsend with all the other creative districts. And it was pretty exciting to watch them talking about how most creatives come to Washington for the natural beauty, but then they're inspired and they stay because of the culture they find in that particular community. And we find that to be true with our local artists and with our local businesses, right? Some of the other benefits that I'll talk about with our own goals as well is increasing tourism, growing the job sector. And then there is this piece of creating opportunities for workforce wage housing, which is a long-term goal, but it does live within what the Washington State Arts Commission and the Department of Commerce want to accomplish with this designation. The creative district, you know, 2017, Edmunds was the first designated after that. This, these, this is the list. With this August, there were five of us, five cities that were at the convening who were in the application process or coming to the end of the application process. So I expect this number to grow by three or five after this August, after the board meets. So you see that they're all a little bit different, right? And so every creative district has its own identity and what really the string through all of it is art and culture and creative businesses. I always ask, we did a couple of community input sessions and we asked people to think about, when they go out of town and they're vacationing, what do they remember about a place, right? Like what strikes them? And you are certainly sure that people leave talking about the Bill Mitchell murals, right? You're certainly sure people leave talking about Cosland Park and a concert that they went to or that they saw music on the water, right? Like we already have all of these things here. And kind of like these other places, they all have their unique, specific kind of quirkiness. So this is a list of the creative economy so that you can see what kind of businesses are in it. It's not just artists. That's one of the, you know, kind of misnomers here is that it's just about artists. It's not, it's about software engineers and brewers and architects and all sorts of, you know, florists and those kind of things. So there's your list about what the Washington State, no, this is actually federal, this is what the creative economy includes from a federal perspective. This is why we started this. We feel like, you know, Mayor Miller and I've had a couple of conversations about how we're in this really great space with art and culture and creative economy in our community right now. We have the new Clay House Studios, we have such great vibrant music happening all over town. There's so many good things happening. So how do we capture this so that it lasts, right? And the creative district really gives us the framework to do that in. And so why we think Anacortes is a good creative district is because of these reasons, right? We have this rich creative history, we have this amazing community, we've talked about all the donations tonight, I feel like that's a part of it, right? That we have such great community support here and great events and great concerts. So this is why we felt comfortable moving forward with the Anacortes Creative District. So this has been a long time coming. For those of you that were on LTAC back in 2019, you'll remember that we started talking about this. So Carlo Locke brought this to the Arts Festival. It went to the city first and the city was concerned about the number of man-hours. Well, I have an optimism that might not always be correct because they had a right to be concerned about the number of man-hours that it took to pull this off. So we worked with Parks and Recreation to start putting some of this together and see if this really made sense. In 2019, we put together an LTAC application because we had to have $5,000 in matching funds in order to get the grants from the state. And LTAC approved us. Well, then we all know what happened in March of 2020 and we took a little break. During COVID, some of us needed something to do, so those of us at Fidalgo Dance Works and the Anacortes Arts Festival and Act Theater and Anacortes Music Project started talking about what this would look like. And we all met by Zoom during that time and we came back together and finished all of our studies. We went and did site visits, we had our community input sessions, and it took us almost two years to do all of that. We started last spring with the application process. It is daunting, it's very bureaucratic. John Sternlicht at EDAS promises me this is just how it is, but it'll be fabulous and beneficial when it's over. beneficial when it's over. So for the last year, we have finished our community input sessions. We have garnered letters of support from far and wide across the community for this. We've put together our steering committee, and we're done. We have completed this application and put together our goals for the next five years. It's a five-year designation. We feel like during that time, that gives, we will come back to the community with our goals. Once the community agrees on that, we can decide if the Anacortes Arts Festival is the right place for this to live past year five, but we are more than happy as an organization to be the ones to get this off the ground. Some examples of things that we're talking about doing is a maker's space, recruiting more businesses and giving them support. Sometimes when you're an artist, you don't always know how to run your own business, so how can we help them? We've been working with the Chamber to try to do some collaborations so that we can bring some business support. We would like to develop an intentional public art program. We would like to do collaborative projects to expand workforce wage housing for creative economy employees. More art and culture programs. As you all know, we're really bent on building an art center at some point, so that's kind of one part of the long-range plan in here. Marketing Anacortes is a destination for art and culture, which the LTAC Committee already supports on some levels. And then we just, one of the big things through all of this with the state is to make sure that we're reaching our underserved communities as much as we can, and we have a lot of bridges to close regarding that. I think that's it. All right, did I go fast enough?
Yeah, that was, that was close to the five minutes.
Okay, sorry, John. Does anyone have questions for me? I mean, you see the proclamation. Do you?
Yes, any questions? So I know, Council, you've seen the letter that I sent out to support this, and I think this is kind of your last big piece of support that you're looking for from the city. And we, I know those of you on the Port City Liaison, everybody's spent a lot of time looking at maps, but, you know, there isn't change to how you can use land or anything like that. It certainly, it's a, it's an area that, you know, that they've got to try to pick to bring to commerce, right? Commerce is who we're trying to talk to with this.
Yeah, and so we're, we're literally from the city asking for our LTAC dollars, which have already been awarded. You've already approved those, and for your approval that the Arts Festival can be the lead on this application process for the first five years. We're not asking for any other funding, or, you know, maybe when we get our big sign, we'll have a sign that goes out on I-5 that designates Anacortes a creative district and another one on Highway 20. Maybe when those signs are done, we'll ask all of you for a photo op.
All right, any questions for Mr. Young?
No, thank you for a succinct, very quick presentation that, you know, DevD. You know, this is something that will be beautiful for our town. You know, as you said, the LTAC Committee, which I chair, is also very much have been supportive of, you know, actionable items as we move this forward. One question, though, you know, it just, I would be, even though it's a little bit different, I would be remiss if I didn't bring it up. You know, again, the transit shed is closing, and our city will be without, you know, a venue to host things that we already host, let alone some of the things that, you know, are important to us to help us further attract. And so this would be a wonderful piece for us, I really do believe. But I'm also hoping that some kind of way, we can find a way to trumpet that gap between the closing of the transit shed and when we may have any other venue to be able to do anything. So those are just my concern, but I'm very much in support of this. I want to be clear about that. But I wanted to put that on our agenda for figuring out a way for us to work together to make it happen because our community will not have a facility downtown that's walkable, even if it's a temporary facility unless we come up with a solution. And so that is a priority as well, I do believe. So we'll be talking.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Young. There are conversations with some community leaders who put on big events regarding this, and we do believe in an event center. The collaborative of the arts groups are in full support of making that happen. And in the interim, we can't stop doing the fabulous things that we do, and so we're going to have to get a little creative, and we are standing behind those efforts for sure.
Mayor? Mr. McDougall?
First of all, thank you very much. I love this, and so thank you and your team for all the time and energy you've put into this. I was wondering, though, if you could scroll it back a couple of slides to the one that showed all the parts of the economy, all the type, business types, because I think this is actually really important. There are dozens of business, like companies, business ventures, other entrepreneurs just in the creative district that we'll be supporting, and this is huge. Like, this is a big aspect of economic diversity. So I love this and full support.
Thank you.
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, so I remember back in, what, 2018, 2019, when this first came across my desk being on Arts Festival, and I thought it sounded nice, but I didn't necessarily think there was a lot of substance beneath it. So after all of these years and all of the hours you all have spent, I just want to say thank you because I know that the city may or may not have realized it, but it was a big undertaking, and we did not have the bandwidth. And I was able to meet with Ms. Roth from the Creative District Program, Artswa, with you and some other stakeholders, and she was very serious, and it was a rigor, it's a rigorous process, the application process, and it was not fluff. And there are some real opportunities, and I, beyond just, not, beyond the fact that it touches a lot of different types of professions, it's also, we have a wonderful community, but it, this kind of designation really attracts more vibrancy. And that doesn't necessarily mean one age group, but it means just kind of the attitude of collective community and collaboration, and I appreciate the fact that it also includes a number of other nonprofits, like the theater and Fidalgo Dance Works and the port and city. I mean, that's, that's a real positive, and so thank you for taking that on as an organization.
Thank you. And, you know, I want to mention, too, at the same time, just serendipitously, though they're getting to move a little faster than us, the Downtown Alliance is moving, and there is a lot of synergy between the two organizations regarding placemaking and wayfinding signage and those kind of things that we're going to be able to work together with the city on and find grants and do the things we want to do. So I think it's really great that we're walking kind of, you know, right next to each other down this path right now. Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
Thank you. Also, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is fantastic. The map is basically where I take people that come to visit. I had a friend from Olympia visit not too long ago, and we just stood at the port facility, and we looked at the working waterfront. Here's Dakota Creek. Here's where the crab come in. Here's these Bill Mitchell signs, and even just the watering can downspouts. Like, all of these things just wow people, and this person just looked me square in the face and was like, I didn't see any creative district signage when I came in. And I was like, oh, yeah, no, we're working on this. So, I mean, it's someone from Olympia who's already on the list, so people are paying attention to stuff like this. So thank you for all your work, and with that, I'm moved to approve Resolution 3127, Designating Anacortes as a Creative District and authorize an application for the state certification.
Second?
A motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve Resolution 3127, Designating Creative Art District. Any additional discussion?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Wanted to add my voice to the chorus of thank yous for the Arts Festival for this. We did make some changes to the language so that it reflects the two-step process. One, we designate. That's going to happen here in five minutes, and then you can go start ordering signs. And then the second step for the arts, Washington State Arts Commission to certify it, and thank you for all the work for getting us toward that step, but even if they didn't, we celebrate the arts here. We have for a long time. The creative economy slide here, I think, said another way, is an economy of creators. And whether you're creating a craft cocktail or an entree or a piece of jewelry, that really is what we have celebrated for a long time in Anacortes, and it's what I think is an encapsulation of some of the things that really make Anacortes the cool place to live and to hang out and to come visit. So I am very supportive of these concepts and celebration of not just the arts, but all of the creative economy, and happy that we're moving forward with it.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for your help, Councilman Walters.
Okay, so still have a motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Ms. Moulton to approve the Resolution 3127. Mr. Franciac, you take the vote, please?
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much, and congratulations. So next up, two more items on our agenda. 6H, Resolution 3128, authorizing the mayor to approve the purchase of up to five police vehicles. This is an action item, and because we're talking money, we're going to have Mr. Hoagland, but he's backed up by Chief Floyd, who stepped out, and, but Mr. Ludeman is also here to back, back up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council and members of the audience. So this Resolution 3128 is something we ran through the Finance Committee to begin with. It's a little different situation. What we are looking at is the vendor that we purchased police vehicles from is experiencing tremendous demand and lead times for those vehicles, and we are anticipating a one-day ordering window, which is in September of this year. And these are four vehicles that will be paid for out of the 2024 budget and delivered later, hopefully delivered in 2024. But because of the, the ordering window being so far in advance of the budget being adopted by Council, Finance Committee recommended that this might be the best route to take, that full Council adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve the purchase of those vehicles in advance of the budget being adopted. So these are five additional vehicles to the fleet that will support the new officers that are, that will be hired and paid for by the levy lid lift. So as Mayor pointed out, Mr. Ludeman is still here, as well as Interim Director Holman. If you have any questions, one of us can try and address those for you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
So I suggested this mechanism for two reasons. One, because it's the most appropriate mechanism to give staff the authority to actually place the order. But two, to get this question in front of us, whether we actually want to buy five new police vehicles, whether we want to add five additional vehicles to the fleet. And I know it's certainly not the unanimous position of staff that we should, but the big question is, do we need a police vehicle for every police officer? And I'm, I'm sure that police officers think that we do, but it's also a significant expense. And so some of the discussion that we had in the Finance Committee was, maybe not. You know, we, there is maybe a happy middle ground between the number of officers on shift at any given time, reducing the fleet to that, and increasing the fleet to having a vehicle available for every single officer. And so Chief Floyd did suggest that, you know, there's a certain number of officers that are, that live on island and are allowed to take their vehicles home per our policy that allows people who, officers who live on island to take their vehicles home. Maybe add some cushion, some margin to that, but then maybe get to a point where we're not ordering vehicles for every officer. The levy lid lift that we successfully passed earlier this year includes the annual cost of vehicles, but not the upfront costs. So we will be having to dig into one fund or another in order to fund the upfront purchase of the vehicles. And I don't think that we have a cash flow problem there, but it is an additional expense that we don't really have the money for right now. So I'm, I'm in favor of having a robust discussion about whether or not we want to get, whether we want to add these five additional vehicles, and whether there's, there's some way we can save the taxpayers some money by not purchasing them and sharing some cars.
And like most of those discussions, you know, this, this hasn't been before the Public Safety Committee, that particular discussion, obviously, it was discussed in Finance, and I appreciate the forward thinking of being able to have that authority to buy the vehicles. But yeah, I agree, the robust discussion, but typically those discussions start in the, in the committee, so that's, that would be my recommendation where we go when the police vehicles. Certainly, we can discuss it for several hours tonight. Chief Floyd, if you want to jump in on that, but that would be my recommendation.
I don't know if I would support the several hours suggestion, but yes. So after the, the Finance Committee discussion, went back and looked at how we would make a, maybe a hybrid model work, and given the addition of staff and the vehicles that are currently in our fleet, we do have the take-home vehicle policy for officers that live on island, and that is to incentivize their living over here where they're much more accessible, should we need to call individuals back in the case of emergency. It's also benefits us in, in less commute time for that person, more rest during rest periods, which enables us to get a officer back to work their subsequent workdays that is more well-rested and focused on the task at hand when they do our, on duty. Looking at the current number in our fleet and talking with Mr. Ludeman, who's assisting with our fleet management, we have several vehicles that are past their replacement cycle, and I asked him to provide the information after a request from Ms. Cleveland this afternoon. There'll be three vehicles going out of service with the vehicles that the city has just received, and there's, you'll see one in transit on that spreadsheet. So the vehicles that are going out of service are 14, 12 years of age, and then one that's at 10 years of age will be essentially replaced on the schedule but retained as a spare vehicle for officers if they have their assigned vehicle in for repair or maintenance, which we do run into from time to time. So we always try to leave a one to two-vehicle buffer for those situations. The, one of the suggestions I mentioned to the Finance Committee was also maybe not necessarily replacing the vehicles based on year, but more based on mileage, because we are looking at vehicles that are coming up to their 10-year age, and the mileage is not as high as was predicted, with the replacement schedule being 10 years or 120,000 miles. So there's some adjustment there we could play with. But getting back to the idea of shared vehicles, if, if we're to potentially look at other scheduling options for our staff, and I don't want to go too deep into that because that would be part of union negotiations, and our HR Director would probably have heart palpitations if I discussed that other than executive session, but suffice it to say, it would be severely limiting on what options we could look at for those alternatives. So I would say that it is possibly doable, but would be, it would add a degree of difficulty if we changed from the schedule we have currently, to be able to manage their potential overlap regardless of what schedule it ends up going to. We're looking at a minimum of one day a week where opposing sides would have overlap and staggered start times potentially where there'd be some overlap, which greater coverage was our goal when we passed this levy and adding staff. So I don't want to look at anything that is counterproductive in those respects. I also, just conferring with Mr. Ludeman here, I believe the calculations in the levy mileage was for the initial purchase of those vehicles, not the maintenance. So I can defer to Mr. Hoagland to clarify that, but.
Yeah, we went back through, we did go back through all of our meetings where we did those calculations, and we believe it was for the actual purchase of the vehicles.
Yeah, because I did go through with Mr. Hoagland and compile all the costs that we could identify well in advance of this levy going to our voters, and the, the cost calculated was for a fully outfitted officer ready to hit the road.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Yes, let me clarify. It, it does include the purchase price of the vehicle. It, it does include the purchase price of the vehicles, it just doesn't provide that money in year zero or year one.
And also discussing the wait times that we're currently looking at with Mr. Ludeman. So, you'll note down at the bottom of the spreadsheet that he sent, there are three vehicles that were purchased, and two of those the city has taken possession of. One of them has been ordered, are on order now for eighteen months that we've been waiting, and it's still in transit. So, there are significant potential wait times that we're looking at. And this, this all came about just because talking with the factory reps and the projected build times that they have, they'll be opening a one-day sales order window on September seventh. So, we're trying to proactively come to council and have these discussions, so we are prepared on September seventh. We would not take possession of these at the earliest until well into next year, when those funding sources should be available.
And when we hope to have more officers on staff as well. And believe me, if this is a money-saving, you know I'm all in on money-saving issues. I realize, but it is a lot, police cars are expensive, so I do appreciate the discussion. But again, the, the ability to do the job is, is the priority, and, and that's why, again, I.
Yeah, our, our staffing is trending upward. Thankfully, we had two new ones start today, so we're doing well in that respect. We're on pace to potentially fill all the vacancies we currently have allotted for this year by the end of the year. Actually have someone coming in tomorrow for a command staff interview, so I'm also trying to, to plan for the future and be prepared should we have continued success with our recruitment efforts early into next year. I've worked with HR Director Winn to have testing that coincides with approval by the Civil Service Commission in the fall, so we can begin background checks in the fall and, and have those hire or not hire decisions ready to make come January, knowing that we'll probably have to send those individuals to the academy, and it'll be a nineteen-week wait.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, thank you. So, I think it'd be great, we didn't have a public safety meeting in July, because I was gone and a number of other folks were gone for the summertime, but I think we're planning to have one in August.
Correct.
So, I guess my first question is, would it be feasible for us to kind of do a little bit more of a deep dive at that council committee level before we kind of move forward? I also, if you have it off the top of your head, just, just so I and the public have a scope of the number of patrol vehicles you have, and, but my first question. And then, second is, you mentioned that there's three that need to be phased out of service, and there's three already on order. Are those to replace the three that are going to be phased out? Is that correct? Okay, so then the five would be, would actually increase the number of vehicles currently working. My only other question, besides the overall number, is that, is there any downside to buying almost eight vehicles within a twelve-month period when we have to go back and replace them, or trying to spread them out, or maybe that's not even an option, and we do kind of do a hybrid of mileage and year?
Those questions, I would probably defer to Mr. Ludeman as the fleet manager for operations. He's more closely associated with the answers you're probably looking for.
Yeah, I think the first question was patrol count, patrol vehicle count.
So, the, the current count for officers and vehicles leaves us with two spare vehicles should there be any maintenance issues or repairs needed.
And that number, I think she's looking for the real number.
So, there is currently twenty-two cars with the twenty officers we would be at.
And then, the other question I think was mileage versus whether, whether it makes sense, and this is probably for Will, whether we can mileage or, or years on it, and if it makes sense spreading it out for ma, I think managing the fleet, I think that was what you were asking.
Very much, yeah.
Yeah, like whether you buy all five of them on the same day, day zero, or you spread them out.
That's a valid, it's a valid question. I think one thing we've noticed is you can put all five into service at one time, but just through different people using them and over different years, different tasks, they end up being on different schedules in the end anyways. So, it's a great thought, and logically you'd think that's the way it works. It never seems to play out that way. We obviously, we always end up changing which year they end up being replaced at. We seem to go more based on miles than in life cycles than years these days, but we have both as a built-in lifecycle just for capturing those costs appropriately. So, yeah, good question.
Mr. Young.
Just, you know, I, I mean, I, I, first of all, the work that's gone into trying to recruit has been extraordinary, and I know it's been a lot of work in trying to retain, and it's a fight between cities trying to get the best people and retain the best people, I, I know. And, and, and I understand that there are things that we have and that you need, and I also understand that what Mr. Walters is asking, that we have a bigger discussion. I don't think it hurts us to have a discussion as council, you know, just a little bit deeper into it, because what I'd love to hear is more on why you think it's important and what, and then have us explore what can or cannot be done, and what are, what are the effects of that. And so, and then I think that that will also begin to address the question of whether or not we need to keep it that way or change it. And so, I would, you know, be happy about it coming to council and us, you know, whether it's going to committee first, but coming to council so we can have a bigger and broader discussion about how we think we want to move it forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, I kind of had a question. I mean, if we were to consider, well, it sounds like we basically have a one-to-one ratio of officers and police vehicles with a couple spares. Roughly ballpark speaking, would you say half are like stay-on-island and are take-home vehicles, the other half are not, or is that even anywhere close to the right estimate?
For individuals assigned to the patrol division, it's approximately a third, but does not take into account individuals in specialty positions that require access to their vehicle, even if they live off-island. Examples of that be our detectives that are assigned to the independent investigative teams that are responsible for any use-of-force incident investigations in Skagit and Island Counties, because we're cooperative members of that team. So, those individuals, for the sake of getting to the scene in an expedient manner, are allowed to take their vehicles home, even if they live off-island, because they are expected to be able to respond to that. And it would be counterproductive for me to require them to come to the office and then go back to Cedar Rowley, for example, when they could go directly there.
So, we're talking like at least half, maybe a little bit more than half are take-home vehicles for either because they live on island or because of just requirements of the job, the vehicle has to go with the, the individual home in that neighborhood. Okay, so we're left with, like, if we were to try to pool things, it's, the pool is quite a bit smaller, and then we look at scheduling and overlapping schedules and things like that. So, like, we probably couldn't half again that pool, like, it would have to still be some, some number like three-quarters at least, or two-thirds at least. I don't know that we, I, I don't know that we save a lot in that case, if it's something like that where we're pooling, you know, eight vehicles across, or eight officers across six vehicles or something like that. I'm just not sure.
And we've also taken steps at the department level, you know, to look for less expensive vehicles for those that are not assigned to patrol, that don't really need the, the space required for a patrol vehicle, you know, like the, the size of a Tahoe. So, those individuals that are in, in non-p patrol positions are driving vehicles that are quite a bit less expense and maintenance for the city.
Actually, correlating that with another item from the Finance Committee discussion was the availability of EV options for police vehicles. And I know we had discussed, maybe that's not like something we would do right away, but perhaps for those roles, that could be something that could be done sooner rather than later, and those would be lower-cost vehicles, certainly from a maintenance standpoint. Is that, the EV option was kind of like first available like next year, is that correct?
Yeah, the, as I understand, that'll be first offered as a police package in 2024. As I shared with you, I'm slightly apprehensive to try it the first year. I'd like to see some of those bugs worked out before we invest a lot of money and end up with something that we're not happy with. We did try that for a couple of different hybrid vehicles in our fleet currently, and, and we've been less than satisfied with one of them in particular, so. But as, as those become a little more refined, I think that is a reasonable option to examine.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Yeah, Mr. McDougal, I do appreciate you articulated the math problem fairly well, though, at the beginning. But anytime you mention scheduling, then it makes me nervous, because I can feel my HR director hitting me upside the head and saying, "We need to go to an executive session." That's why I explained the limitations on that discussion. Mr. Carter.
I would agree on waiting a little bit on EV. I would hate to see there be an emergency and they can't get somewhere because they have to stop and charge. But if we're going to continue that current conversation, I would be curious if there's a way to find out if there's a difference in maintenance cost for shared vehicles versus take-home. I would be inclined to think that if there's a take-home vehicle, there's more ownership over it, and it's well better maintained by the individual versus the shared ones. Looking at like any of the city vehicles that are shared, if their maintenance cost is higher versus if there's other departments we could reach out to and ask.
I think that that very fact is one of the reasons that many cities today are going to assigned vehicles, where cities have historically had pool cars. We were actually kind of on the, on the leading edge of that many years ago, twenty-five-plus years ago, when we established a signed vehicle program. I would tell you that there's only one municipality left in Skagit County that doesn't use that model now, and I don't know if they have plans to change that, but the, the vehicles being taken care of a little bit better because the individual has a little bit of ownership there is, is one of the, the cost-effective means that fleet managers are looking at.
So, just to clarify what you just said, there's only one municipality in Skagit County that, that does the pool vehicle program?
Correct.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
My focus here is on how we can save some money, because we are talking about two-and-a-half, three million dollars worth of vehicles for a single department, right? At a hundred thousand dollars apiece, if we're talking twenty-two or up to thirty vehicles, it's some real money. I think that most of your points are fairly persuasive, and I would just like to see maybe a, a spreadsheet laying out how many vehicles and officers in each category, and the number of years that each vehicle is currently in our ERNR system, and then the proposed five. I think having, getting to see that on a single sheet of paper would be particularly helpful. I am very interested in having a robust discussion about the schedule changes, and so I don't want to get in the way of anything that, I don't want, I don't want to prevent that discussion because we didn't order some cars, because that is an important objective, in my view, of the levy lid lift. So, I don't need to make a decision on this resolution tonight, and I would encourage council to not make a decision tonight, but that we revisit this with, you know, maybe a, a look at the list and the spreadsheet, and maybe any other data you can, you can bring to bear.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, thanks, Mr. Ludeman. I have, maybe there's another way of looking at it too, not in regard to scheduling, but in regard to hours used, like how many hours a day is each vehicle on the road? I don't know what kind of records you have, but how often or how much are they sitting idle? What are the costs or space required for storage of the vehicles? What are the ongoing maintenance costs? Some of the things that might not be as obvious at first, at first glance, so like isn't, you know, even things like insurance, I mean, these ongoing costs are going to be significant, and I'd like to know what those are as well. And to me, even if we are able to buy one less car and have everything work as it should within the department, that's a hundred thousand dollars, and whatever the maintenance is on top of that. So, I really would like to dig really deeply into this, because I think it will benefit all of us to know that kind of information as we, as we have our discussion. And I know there are things that I'm not thinking to ask, that I think that Mr. Ludeman, as the, as the fleet manager, could, could provide some information on, but I don't even know what the questions are, so anything. At our next meeting, maybe we can have some of that information you think is relevant.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I'll make this quick, I promise. When you're, while you're pulling data, one of the things I think that would be helpful to know is how many cars are actually out visible to the public at any one given time? Like, I can't imagine that there's going to be a time when every single fleet is somewhere on the island, but I know that I'm already receiving messages from constituents that are asking about, well, I expected to see an increased police presence. You know, so the, the public is aware of the levy that's been passed, they expect to see more patrol out there. So, I think that having some information will also help us set expectations as we head into 2024, and we get that actual levy funding in our coffers and start talking about vehicles that we're going to put people in.
Again, even if council authorized me to, to go ahead and make the purchases, I'm not going to do that without this full, full discussion, but I'm good with postponing it. We just need to make sure we don't miss the, miss the window, and I think we're still okay, but it, it could come back on sooner. So, okay, we'll, I guess, table this one for now and move on to item six I, as in India, Access Anacortes Fiber Fiber Internet Update. And Ms. Shu.
Still here.
Yeah, it's impressive.
Really appreciate the opportunity to.
Everybody was waiting for this up, this fiber update. But, but you should probably be quick about it. I mean, we're all looking forward to it.
So, tonight, I'm pleased to just provide an update on Access Anacortes Fiber Internet. It's been a while since I've given this presentation. I did not expect it to be at the, so, so late in a, in a meeting, so thank you for your patience. In 2018, we spent a lot of time developing a business plan for what our fiber business could look like. At that time, it did not have a name, but there were seven things that we identified that we needed to do. We needed to find a way to deliver high-speed residential and business internet service at competitive prices throughout the community. We're successfully doing that. We need to provide excellent customer service. I am so proud of our team for the, the customer service that they provide. They really go above and beyond. In order for the, the business to be successful, we needed to achieve a market share of over thirty-five percent, or thirty-five percent or more, and I'll show you the information about what our, our take rate is. We certainly are doing that. Two areas that we're continuing to work on are the next two bullets about paying for our construction liabilities, our loans, or subscriber revenue, and achieving a payback on our construction investment with a fifteen-to-twenty-year window on that. So, we are working on those two items, and we'll have a, a plan before the end of the year for you. We did achieve being cash flow positive year two and a half, so we, we made that. And we do think that we are helping to spur business development and economic growth. In fact, we, we anecdotally had a conversation with the port of Anacortes a couple of years ago that said the reason one of the businesses located at a port facility was specifically due to the, the access to access the Anacortes Fiber Internet. So, our value proposition, we took those business plans and put it into four different pillars that we wanted to, to focus our service on, that is having faster speeds, lower prices, being more reliable, and being locally run. We want this to be a very easy, truly local internet where the, the, the cost and the contracting and the, the process for having service with the city would not be a deterrent for people to make that, that decision. So, I'm pleased to see that more of our city is turning green. That means that the, the area is lit up. The area that you can see that is new is that we actually have some areas in the, what this pink area we call the Guamis View. this pink area, we call the, the Gueimas View expansion, and we have some areas lit up, and that we are doing installations in that area as well. The Gueimas View service area and that construction is, is going along really well. Summit X is installing the conduit, and then city staff are coming back and installing and splicing that, that fiber. That allows us to get pockets of the construction in service more quickly than kind of the traditional way that we've done the, the business, where we've been doing, the whole project has to be done for the splicing to be complete, for us to do those installations. So pleased with that work. And this is an actual picture of the, the work that Summit X is doing in that. You can see that the machine that they're utilizing makes a very clean cut. The EDA service area is an area where we have received a $2.5 million grant from the Economic Development Administration Department of Commerce, and we've been working on this. We were awarded this two years ago, and it's just very detail-oriented in terms of making sure that we're meeting all the requirements of the grant. This will be what we call basically infilling the areas in the, the city of Anacortes and kind of the, the general main area of Anacortes, and things are really moving along. The, the materials intent-to-bid package was re-released last week. That will be out for a total of 14 days. The first time that we had put it out, we didn't have a qualified respondent, and so we were following the, the requirements of the EDA there. The construction intent-to-bid package is under development, with a great appreciation to the, the work and the partnership with the, the engineering department, that they're helping us with that. And we are still expecting that, that construction should be able to begin this year, late this year, and that we will go through first quarter of 2025, and that we'll be beginning those installations in, in 2025. This is a little bit different because it is grant-funded, that we will be putting kind of the whole package in place before we're able to get those installations in, in the, in the service.
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
Well, that was going to be my question. So there isn't the ability to, when a section of the EDA area is done, follow in and get people hooked up?
What I expect is that when we put out the, the construction package, that what they will do is probably whoever bids on it, that they'll use a, a third-party provider to do that splicing, and oftentimes when they're coming up to, to do that, they're going to be doing big batches. And so it'll be dependent on when all those batches are, are done. You know, there may be little areas here, here and there, but not the flexibility that we've had with the Gueimas View.
Is it possible to break it into at least three sections or something? I mean, the, the reason I ask is that people in the EDA service area have really been waiting a long time. They are the last to get service, and starting construction in 2023 and ending it in 2025 and starting to hook people up in 2025 is just, it just continues to add time to the wait that people have experienced. Is there anything that we can do to cut that wait?
I think that one of the things that we can do is, as we're putting together the, the construction intent-to-bid package, we can talk about language, about how things could be looked at that way, that maybe there's some, some, some flexibility. Anything that we put together needs to, and needs to be approved before it's released by, by the EDA, and so we're just, it's just this push and pull to be able to have this, this conversation about how we can get this service area in, in place. So we are very appreciative of the support that we're getting through the EDA and the assistant that we're working with, but it's just time-consuming to, to get it passed up all the way through, and things just take a little longer. I do appreciate the, the patience of the community, because this was an area that we are very appreciative that we have a, a grant to offset some of the costs, but we weren't expecting this to be kind of the, the last area in town that we would be completing.
Yeah, and I don't think you used, you reminded everybody of the federal word. This is the Federal Economic Development Agency, that with the $2.5 million, it really will help, but that's one of the big challenges. But, but no, I appreciate the input. We will, we've learned a lot as we've, we've built this project, and we'll, we'll hopefully work with the EDA to do exactly what you said as we bid the project.
As you can expect, the, the question that we always receive is, where are you going to expand further? And the parameters that we've been utilizing, just in terms of communicating with the, the public, and communicating with the, the Fiber Committee, the, the Council Fiber Committee, is that our first priority is still going to be providing service within the city limits. So the areas that we expect that we will need to continue to work on is along that Highway 20 corridor in the UGA area, and then there'll be some pockets of neighborhoods within the city that, as we're just going through development and design and meeting all the EDA requirements, there are a couple places that we need to, to bypass, and we'll come, come back and get those. So Newton, just wanted to give you an update. This is one of our employees doing an actual install on the outside of the house. So as of end of business today, we have 2,010 customers actively in service. Overall, the, in the areas that we are providing service, we're just under 50% take rate, so that is very beneficial from a financial standpoint. And we continue to get install applications or requests for, for service on a, on a daily basis. So you can see that, when you see the $125,000, that is a monthly revenue from the, the This is a, just looking at a financials, and you'll, you'll see a lot of red here, but we're just trying to just show a kind of year-over-year. So we're, we're kind of, the, the first thing is looking at January through December of 2020. We first put customers into service, January to December 21, 22, and then January through June, actuals of '23, and then where we estimate that, that we will be in end of year. So our operating revenue, you can see the, the building over the, the three years that we're looking at, '21, '22, and then half of this year, and our operating expenses, the operating expenses are directly related to the, the cost of staff that are not necessarily associated with the, the network construction. That is shown under the, the network construction, and you can see that we've made significant costs in, in building out the, the network. And what I am pleased with, that in 2022, we did become operationally cash flow positive, and we expect that that is, we know that that is continuing, and that by the end of the year, it'll be about $263,000 is what we are projecting. So you can see that there are cash flow needs still remaining with this project, and we appreciate the, the support, the community to, to continue to work with that. Again, trying to find some different ways to, to show kind of the, the year-over-year for the, the level of customers between July of each year. So you can see a very big increase between July of '21 and July of '22. That's when we were starting to, to put in the areas that were primarily aerial installations, when we had that, those pockets together. And then between July of '22 and July of '23, that is when we've moved out into the, the West End, and the majority of those are underground installations, they just take longer to do. It's a, a lot more physical labor to, to get those installations done than it is to connect aeroly. So, and you can see also at the, the far right, just the, the monthly revenue continued to, to grow over time. So one thing I really wanted to point out, and I know that there was discussion about it when there was a, the, the Fiber Committee gave a report last week, but we are continuing to, to work on our network diversity and redundancy. So we are going to be contracting with multiple service providers that will give us diverse paths for our upstream internet connectivity, so different companies and different paths. So we're really working on that as part of our business continuity and resilience plan. And just as we talk about the, the impact of high-speed internet access in Vermont, in Vermont, in Anacortes, sorry. My hometown had some issues last week with all the flooding, it's been in my mind, so I'm sorry. That one of the things that we really speak to is that we think that this provides an opportunity for expanding markets in local businesses. So taking beyond just the, the storefront, being able to have a internet presence as, as well, can really help with, with an online marketplace. Studies have shown that having access to high-speed internet can allow people easier ability to increase their education. Anytime that you can increase opportunities for education, that can change people's career paths, and also ability to, to earn income, and it gives them some additional options. We know that there are lots of people that come to, to Anacortes, you know, during, during COVID, but even afterwards, that specifically want to live in the Anacortes community, and so they want to be able to, to telework. Being able to move big packets of information was a limiting factor that we heard many times before we had this service in place, and that, that's really been a, a benefit to the community, that people can choose to, to live and work here, even if their main office is someplace else. We also see the, the benefit with telemedicine options, especially in a rural community, you know, such as Anacortes, the, the ability to be able to have access to, to services where maybe there are a limited number of providers, that is a, a benefit to the community. I like to, to point out, if people sign up and are connected with Anacortes, they get one less bill a month, because the, the service is included with the city's utility bill, and it is non-taxable, taxable, because it is only internet service that, that the city is providing. Studies have, have shown the, the fiber to the Home Council of Americas has shown that there's a 3.1%, 3.1% increase in property prices by having access to your home. So it's a good thing for, for home value to be able to say that this, this home that I, that I have, that maybe I want to put on the market, has that internet, high-speed internet. And we're always looking at ways to, to business, encourage business development, and, you know, as I mentioned previously, the, the, the port conversation that we had is just a good recognition of that. So I'm sorry to kind of put this together so quickly, but I know it's been a long evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you have.
All right, questions for Ms. Hsu? Ms., Mr. Walters, and then Ms. Moulton.
On a previous slide, you mentioned that, you know, it enhances educational opportunities. I, I'd say that a lot of families could probably take advantage of those online educational opportunities with a cable modem, maybe even with DSL. But one of the things that we offer, aside being faster and more reliable, is a fairly low cost. And so I, I think that that's really an important facet of all this that we need not lose as we go forward. The, the low base cost for 100-megabit service, which is all most people need, and a utility bill discount program for people that really are at the low end of the income spectrum, makes it pretty affordable. And affordable not for something like DSL, which isn't reliable and isn't fast, but for the gold standard in internet connectivity. So I'm most proud of that.
And it hasn't changed since we started this. Ms. Moulton.
Yes, that is impressive, the affordability and the quality and the customer service and all the things that you mentioned. Thank you for all your hard work and for this excellent presentation. We were due for a view like this, so.
Thank you. It's an incredible team that, that's working citywide to, to make this reality.
Anybody else? Any members of the public that are still here? If you're hanging on this late, you should have an opportunity to address the council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Also, thank you very much to yourself and the team, and I also wanted to point out, like, customer installations began like kind of right at the beginning of the pandemic. So amazing work, like overcoming the challenges of just getting, getting that done and getting revenue coming into the system in a really difficult time. So thank you, and thanks to the team for that as well.
Okay, nothing else before the council? I will adjourn the council meeting of 17 July. Thank you.